Committee on Finance will come to order. Today, we have three agendas. The first agenda, first bill up is House Bill 1150 H D one related to invasive species. First one is DLNR.
Aloha Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. Chelsea Arnott with the Department of Land and Natural Resources and Program Support for the Hawaii Invasive Species Council. It's very exciting to be the first testifier today. So, good morning to everybody. We are in strong support of this measure. Little fire ant is a major pest to agricultural and natural resources, and it will completely impact our community and visitors' way of life if it becomes established across the state. We also put in some additional comments on the importance in ensuring biosecurity at our ports of entry to really ensure the inter-island movement of this pest doesn't continue to spread and also new pest incursions coming in. So, really appreciate your time today, and I'll be around for any questions after. Mahalo.
Okay, thank you. The Department of Agriculture.
Good morning, Chairperson Yamashita, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, Sharon Heard, Department of Agriculture. The department stands in support of this bill and appreciates the appropriation to carry through the intent of the bill, and we have subject matter experts here to answer questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next is Hawaii Ant Lab Hilo on Zoom.
Hi, great. Aloha Chairman Yamashita, Vice Chair Katagawa, Members of the Committee. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to provide this testimony. Let me start my video. Relating to HB 1150 relating to invasive species, my name is Michelle Montgomery, and I am submitting this testimony on behalf of Hawaii Ant Lab. Now, the issue of the little fire ants has been and will continue to be significant for all of us. For the past thirteen or so years, the Hawaii Ant Lab has been on the forefront battling LFA, whether it be through research, improved treatment options for the public, control and management services, or through educational and extension services.
Can you hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can't hear you right now.
You can?
You know what? Can we come back to you? We're gonna move on to the next testifier.
Okay.
Hawaii Ant Lab, also on Zoom. Hold on one second.
Yes, good morning. Committee on Finance Chair and Vice Chair, my name is Casper Vanderwood. I've worked at the Hawaii Ant Lab for some years, and I'm here to offer strong support for this bill and to, I guess, reinforce that.
Yes, sir. We don't have your audio too. Can you hold on one second?
I'm very sorry. Are you able to hear me now?
Okay, we're gonna take a short recess. Recession. Okay, we're gonna reconvene the Committee on Finance, and we're gonna continue, we're gonna start, first start with Hawaii Ant Lab Hilo. Go back in order.
Okay, I think that's me.
You're Hawaii Ant. Okay, both of you are. Okay, go ahead. Proceed.
My name's Casper Vanderwood. I've worked with the Hawaii Ant Lab for some years now. I'd like to thank the Committee, the Chair and the Vice Chair and the rest of the Committee for giving me the opportunity to testify strongly in favor and support of this bill. I would like to reinforce the consequences of this bill not being funded, and that is that the Hawaii Ant Lab, as we know, would no longer exist. We're currently unfunded, which is an unfortunate consequence of the change in some discretionary funds within the legislature in 2021, and we are sincerely hoping that you're able to continue to fund this battle against the little fire ants statewide.
Thank you very much. Next up is Hawaii Ant Lab, Michelle Montgomery.
All right. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
All right, wonderful. Thank you, Chairperson, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. I appreciate the time to speak. I am clearly in very strong support of HB 1150. As Cass and Chelsea and everyone has said already, the issue of little fire ants is a significant one for all of us in this state, and it's not gonna go away. So, the Ant Lab has been on the forefront of battling this problem for thirteen-plus years, whether it be through research activities for improving treatment options, providing control and management services, or through educational extension services. And over the years, we see firsthand impacts that this has on the livelihood of those affected, and we hear their frustrations daily. You know, the ants are widespread on the Big Island, and Representative Kahaloa, you can probably attest to seeing how your district, to seeing this frustration, because your district is one of the most affected on the Leeward side of the Big Island. The ants are also invading districts for Representative Katagawa, Takuyua, Cochrane, and Tanayuchi. You guys have active infestations in your districts right now as we speak, and we, the Hawaii Ant Lab, are the responding, are putting responding services for those. And so, we're at a tipping point, and we, with funding as normal, and in the past, as we can get it, we can continue on, but we may not be able to do more as more infestations are found. And so, the good news is we have methods available that are effective, and they work well when we can find the infestations. The bad news is we definitely need the funds and the funding in order to provide these services for people now and in the future. And with that, I'll keep it short, and thank you guys for the time.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up is Roar, Rescue of Animal Rights.
Aloha Akaiaka Chair, Vice Chair on the FIN committee. Angela Melody Young testifying on behalf of Roar, Rescue of Animal Rights. Little fire ants has a scientific name, Wasmania arrow punktata. This particular ant species lives in a social colony. One colony has several queens. All the workers are sterile daughters of a queen. Males are notably absent from day-to-day life and are produced seasonally for breeding purposes. Each ant has a specific task, and most foraging ants, the ones we see, are the older workers assigned to a high-risk task of finding food. A large portion of the colony stays out of sight. After mating, their purpose is served, and they die. Fifteen thousand different ant species are known to science, and another fifteen thousand has not yet been discovered yet. Ants are a vital component of most ecosystems on our planet. In Hawaii, the little fire ant is seen as an invasive species. What is an invasive species? Invasive species are simply species of plants and animals that, for one reason or another, have the ability to become dominant organisms in the environment. But it's not just that it could be dominant, it's that it often has a detrimental effect on other species. So, that's the complete definition of invasive species. Usually, these species come from other locations where they are not a problem, but outside of their natural environment, then they become a problem. One theory for this is that normally checks and balances in natural environments evolve to keep everything in its place. Checks and balances include natural predators, pathogens, weather patterns, or a host of other factors. When a particular plant or animal is moved to an area where these checks and balances are not present, the species is able to multiply and invade their new home. An average home can support 22 million ants. Anything, like the sting from an ant is not from aggression, but it is just out of alarm. The Hawaii Ant Lab is a small lab based in Hilo with two other locations in Kailua, Kona, and Oahu. The lab works with residents, agricultural sector, the green industry, and the plant nurseries to provide solutions for the many impacts caused by invasive ants. Hawaii Ant Lab is a program of the UH Pacific Cooperative Studies Unit, and it is dedicated to increasing knowledge about invasive species, biology, management, and eradication. Bless you. Roar is a strong advocate for management strategies that do not involve inhumane treatment of animals or eradication. Perhaps it could be for consideration that the studying at the Ant Lab, they can study the benefit of trading this animal species to a state where this ant species can benefit agriculture crop or help to regulate another species. Certain species of ants decrease pests. For example, ticks may be decreased in pastures and yards infested with fire ants. And also, ants help to regulate cockroaches. And in the cotton and sugarcane industries, they appreciate ants because the ants will eat caterpillars and other pests of cotton and sugarcane.
I believe testifiers not speaking to the merits of the bill.
Okay, so I just want to conclude that instead of eradicating the little fire ants, it can be studied that it could benefit, there can be other benefits of the ant. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Yeah, thank you very much. And then, Ms. Young, going forward, we appreciate that you're now putting your testimony in written form, so the Committee has your testimony, so it's not necessary to read it. If you can just summarize what do you want to say, and we appreciate that for making our hearing a little more efficient. So, members, is there anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Okay, seeing none, members, any questions? Representative Ward.
Thank you, Chair. I will sound like a broken record, but is the Ant Lab expert here, or who's the one who knows everything about these fire ants? I need to ask you a couple of questions.
Yes, I'm available for questions.
Okay, first of all, what's the cumulative damage that these ants have created? Have you got an economic or a dollar amount?
I do, sir. We did a study while I was a part of a team that looked at this, at the economic impacts of little fire ants, just on the Big Island, and our best estimate is that the current impact would be in the vicinity of $100 million per year. We have not done a similar study for Oahu. I suspect that the impacts to Oahu would be much more substantial, given the increased population size of that island and its reliance on tourism and other outdoor activities.
So, it could be double, give or take whatever, a few million. The point is, now, the next question, and the point of the first question is, how much have we spent on the eradication or the control of the fire ant to date, since it was discovered in, I think it says, 2009?
It was first discovered in 1999 by the island entomologists.
Okay, sorry, 10 years, 24 years ago.
24 years.
How much have we spent on this issue?
I cannot give you an estimate of what has been spent in terms of mitigation, but currently, I think our total costs are probably in the $700,000 per year bracket, but there are other agencies doing work alongside us. We work in close collaboration with Department of Agriculture and DLNR.
Okay, I don't do math in public, but it looks like you got maybe 20 or 30 million invested, but we've got 200 million of damage, and you're asking for 500,000. The point is, if we've had this around so long, and we've invested so little money, and now it's a crisis, what are we doing sitting on our hands, or apparently it looks like we're sitting on our hands?
We are, sir. We are sitting on our hands, and the reason we're sitting on our hands is a lack of reliable, consistent funding. This has been an ongoing battle, I think, since the discovery of the species. It is an expensive task to control. It cannot be eradicated. What we can do, what we're able to do is mitigate the impacts to people, to the environment, and to industry. We do the very best we can. That $500,000 or $700,000 a year is preventing impacts in the range of 100 million a year. So, there's a 20 to 1 benefit in investing funds in trying to deal with this. It's not just agriculture and agricultural industries, it's everyday people that are now find that their house is surrounded by little fire ants, they can't use their yards anymore, they are. anymore, they are puzzled, bewildered by the fact that the regular products that they might buy in the stores are not effective against the species, that in turn leads to an overuse of pesticides, and an increase in the impact generally.
Okay, you've put the ball in our court, so to speak, but how much money do you need to actually get a handle on this, so we don't come back every year saying, hey, we've got a crisis on our hands? How much, is the 500,000 is not going to knock it out?
This is, it's a bit like growing, it's a bit like looking after lawn, sir. It needs to be mowed every few weeks. This is not a one-off request. This is a request for the ongoing cost associated with mitigating the species.
So, you can't eradicate it, is what you're saying?
It cannot be eradicated with the technology we have currently, and that may change in the future with new technology, but right now, we have people that need help, residents that need help, industries, businesses that need help. We do our very best to provide that. Well, really, most of our funds are being spent in dealing with the impacts, managing the problem, rather than eradicating it. The cost of eradication is beyond the scope of the Hawaii State Legislature to appropriate. The best we can hope for is to blow the spread as much as possible, and make life as easy as possible for the residents and the industry and the natural ecosystems.
You make it sound like COVID, actually, but that's enough questioning already. Thank you very much.
We have a vaccine for COVID, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any further questions? Seeing none, we're going to move on to the next bill, House Bill 521 relating to raw milk. First up is Department of Agriculture.
Good morning. Leo Baldo, Hawaii Department of Agriculture, testifying on behalf of Chairperson Sharon Hart. We stand on our written testimony opposing this bill. We're available for questions if there are any.
Thank you very much. Next up is Department of Health, Environmental Health Administration.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the Finance Committee. My name is Peter Oshiro. I'm the Program Manager for the Food Safety Branch, giving testimony on behalf of the Department of Health. I'm just going to be real brief and give you a 30-second pitch. The study, we are in strong opposition to this bill. The study found, when I say the study, CDC has found that the number of outbreaks linked to raw milk has increased over time from 1998 through 2018. 202 outbreaks, 2,645 outbreak-associated illnesses occurred because of drinking raw milk. Areas where raw milk was legally sold had 3.2 times more outbreaks than areas where the sale of raw milk was illegal. Areas where raw milk was allowed to be sold in retail stores had 3.6 times more outbreaks than areas where sale was allowed only on farms. The study shows that the laws that increased availability of raw milk are associated with more illnesses and outbreaks. More states are legalizing the sale of raw milk, even though this leads to an increase in the number of outbreaks. Thank you for allowing me to testify. I'll be available for questions.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else wishing, please come forward.
I didn't send in testimony for this, so it's not redundant. By the way, is this okay?
Yes, fine.
Okay, I just want to make sure it's okay and to verify procedure. Thank you. Aloha, Akaiaaka Chair, Vice Chair in the Fin Committee, Angela Melody Young, testifying on behalf of CARES. We are just providing comments. So, raw milk is milk that has not been pasteurized to get rid of the harmful bacteria. Raw milk has harmful, has harmful bacterias such as E. coli and Salmonella, and this bacteria, E. coli and Salmonella, can cause serious health risks for you and your family. This is according to the CDC. And also, according to the foodsafety.gov, an official federal government website, raw milk is one of the riskiest foods when it comes to food safety regulations. Milk, dairy, yogurt, and cheese are within this category of riskiest foods because it is associated with food illnesses, such as food poisoning caused by harmful bacterias, such as E. coli and Salmonella. Pasteurizing milk reduces the chance of illness. Pasteurizing is a process of heating milk to a high enough temperature to get rid of the harmful bacteria in the milk. So, the concern here is that more farmers want to sell their products, but there are some situations where there should be consideration of the consequences. If you deregulate milk, it can cause a myriad of safety concerns. And of course, in the mix of, like, food safety concerns, it's the harmful bacterias causing a lot of diseases. So, is it worth it to deregulate and let the farmers sell, and then you'd have to deal with all the safety concerns, or perhaps, there is another way to solve this problem, such as the state can provide equipment to the small farmers to pasteurize the milks, so that farmers don't have to bypass the correct procedure? Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone else wishing to testify? Seeing none, members, questions? Representative Ward.
Sorry, Chair, this is something we've visited for years upon years upon years. Peter, thank you for all you do for the health of the people of Hawaii. I have a question. How serious are, you mentioned outbreaks, you make it sound like it's, you know, serious. What are the outbreaks? How many people have died?
I don't have the mortality figures, but 202 outbreaks from 1998 to 2018, and 2,645 outbreak-related illnesses.
What does that mean, diarrhea, or stomach pains, what?
You know, that might be for, if you're healthy, you know, that might be the outcome, but if you're very young or very old, you cannot fight off the same effective doses, and you might end up in a hospital dying. And that's just the fact.
What does your data say? I like metrics, but you haven't drilled down into it to say what these outbreaks entail?
I have, it's part of my testimony, yeah. It's kind of an 11-page testimony that got into a lot of what diseases are the ones.
Summarize, is it diarrhea, is it stomach pains, you get appendicitis?
You can die from it, that's what it is.
How many have died, though?
I don't have that data in front of me right now.
But that's very important for us to know, if we're going to take these away from farmers who have access to the small.
Well, I think the view is not taking it away from farmers, it's, you know, helping the public, right?
For those who are loving raw milk, et cetera. Okay, thank you very much, Peter. Keep up the good work, except being respectful.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Members, any further questions? Okay, seeing none, we're moving on to House Bill 1373, HD1, relating to workforce development. First up is DBED, Creative Industry, I think.
Hello, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. We stand on our testimony with comments to it, and thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm sorry, Georgia Skinner is with our offices here to answer detailed questions. Thanks.
Thank you. Next is Department of Taxation.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Kristin Sakamoto for the Department of Taxation. We submitted written comments, and I just wanted to add that we estimate no material tax revenue impact as a result of this measure. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Next is IATSE 665.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name is Tui Anas Kanlam, President of IATSE Local 665. We represent the technicians behind the camera on all of these projects. Bills like this encourage local independent filmmakers and provide vital workforce development opportunities for new and young technicians to develop their skills to advance through a larger stage or a larger arena of work. So, we stand on our written testimony in support, and are available for questions.
Okay, thank you. Next up is SAG.
Good morning. Marie Chapalma Elmore for SAG-AFTRA, the Screen Actors Guild, and American Federation of Television and Radio Artists. I apologize, I think our testimony is late, but you got it, so yay. We stand on our written testimony and also echo what our union brother, Tui, mentioned. It really is a beneficial thing for up-and-coming actors and young filmmakers also. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Please come forward.
Angela Melody Young, testifying on behalf of CARES. We just wanted to strongly support this measure, to provide more opportunities for the film and TV industry. The film and TV industry has a tax incentive, and it brings a lot of revenue to the state, and it also publicizes good information about our culture and the state. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to testify? Please come forward.
Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Ricardo Galindas, Island Film Group, largest local film and television production company in business since 2007. We strongly support this measure, and we appreciate your support as well. Available for questions.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify? Seeing none, questions, members? Mr. Representative Kobayashi.
For Tax Department, you said that this measure will have no impact?
No material tax revenue impact. We would defer to DBED as to the number of productions that would take advantage of the rebate program, but from a tax perspective, we, because there's a provision that taxpayers that claim the credit, the film credit, won't be allowed to claim the rebate as well, so our testimony is just limited to the impact for the film credit, that we estimate no material tax revenue impact.
But wouldn't there be a lot of people who do not get the tax credit?
We don't estimate that it will actually affect the number of, or the amount of credit claimed. There is an aggregate cap for the film credit, and we do not estimate that it'll be affected by this rebate program.
So, how would you enforce this, when it talks about local independent film and television productions, but it doesn't define what local is, it doesn't define what independent is?
So, we would defer to DBED for administration of the rebate program, because tax would not be involved in approval of the rebates. We are just involved in the film credit and ensuring that if you participate and receive a rebate, that you're not also claiming the film credit.
You would not be involved in the rebate?
Right, this is administered by DBED.
But it's a rebate based on the Hawaii W-2 form?
Yes, so that, our understanding is the taxpayer would submit the form that they provide to the tax department to DBED for application for the rebate program.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Members, any further questions? Representative Ward.
SAG-AFTRA, a new name. Thank you for your testimony. My question is, what are the average salaries? You're known for having very good-paying jobs. Is there an average that you can tell us that this?
I'll have to get back to you on that, because average, that takes into account a whole wide range of different workers and different classifications. So, if you want, I can meet with you afterwards and give you those specific numbers.
I know from earlier testimony that a grip, the guys that do all the grunt work, are 75, 80,000 even.
So, I can't speak to?
Okay, can anybody verify that, because this is an industry that has got a lot of promise to it, by estimation. Sorry about that, AFTRA. Sir, average paying job?
The average, it is roughly, for a major motion picture, roughly $45 an hour, just as an aggregate, and that's just the ballpark. It really depends, again, on the classification. There are some that make much more than that, some that make slightly less than that, but that's a ballpark figure.
Which is more than we make, actually, but that's neither here nor there. The question is, is it Kentucky or Georgia that's ahead of us in this arena? Georgia. Okay, it's Georgia.
As far as the wages go, so?
No, this benefit program.
Oh, I see, yes.
Is this benefit program active in what they're doing, because they're ahead of us, and we need to see what they're doing in roughly?
This rebate program is different from the film tax incentive.
Exactly.
Yeah, so they're, they have other vehicles that promote local independent filmmakers, and when we say independent, that means outside of the major motion picture studio system, right? So, they're not Fox, or Sony, or any of, like, the larger studios, right? They're normally just a handful of people that got together that wanted to tell a story.
So, this bill will give us a leg up on Georgia? Yes or no?
Yes.
Okay, terrific, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions? Okay, we're going to move on. Representative Kobayashi.
For DBED, how would you determine what portion of a person's W-2 wages were paid for by film, filming of film, television, commercial, and print projects?
So, again, we are in conversations with our WAG regarding how DBED would be able to administer this. We currently administer the film tax credit, and I would create the same kind of priority schedule in terms of how we request the data. The concern is the 30-day turnaround at this point. So, it would be up to DBED to be able to not only qualify these, be able to converse with the filer to make sure that there's no concerns about any of the payments, and I would say it seems fairly straightforward. Again, on our end, we're going to need to add another position, which we did request in our testimony, an exempt position that has production industry experience, particularly production accounting. It would be very helpful. I do think it's a valuable measure. We just need to just?
How do you determine, say, you're a driver, you're driving a truck related to a film project, would you get a rebate?
Well, it actually comes through the filer, so the filing entity, and that might be a good question for one of our production entities here that does a lot of independent production. So, they hire them, they submit. It's not the individual driver that would be submitting to DBED, no. It comes through the company that is the production.
Oh, I see.
And that, and then we also, because we do track every production, we have a culling criteria that was developed with DOTACs on the film tax credit. So, similarly, we will have to create rules, we'll have to be able to issue the payments, and we are bound by procurement, so that will be another question that we'll have to get back to the committee on in terms of how we would manage it.
What about print projects?
Oh, you mean, print projects or still photography?
No, I mean, print projects on page three, line 13.
Just a moment. Oh, thanks. So, print projects are a little different, line 13. So, what this means is there are many large, let's say, photography projects that are big catalogs, and they can be a very high budget. Those individuals that work on that production may not be hundreds, it may be 10, but they probably would fall into this category of being able to claim 50%. The production entity or the company that handles the print project, it's not the photographer by themselves, or it could be, but it just depends. The print projects, I think, is something to look at. I haven't really dived into that, but I will.
So, does a photographer who does still photography, who then sells still photography to a catalog company, or even an advertising agency, would that person qualify for rebate?
I don't believe so, no.
Why not?
I'd have to check. Really, I think this is why we will need rules issued from DBED to be able to comply with the measure.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Members, any further questions? Thank you very much. We'll move on to the next bill, House Bill 999, HD1, relating to Hawaii Technology Development Corporation. First up is HDDC, Lenigashi, or Desigti.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Ray Gomez for HDDC, testifying on behalf of Lenigashi. HDDC stands on our written testimony in support.
Chairman of Commerce of Hawaii?
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. Sheri Menor McNamara here. We stand on our written testimony in support.
Okay, thank you. Oceanette? Not here. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on this measure?
Sorry, DBED as well went, I'm not sure if ours got in, but yeah, we stand in support as well. We'll submit the testimony.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to testify? Seeing none, members, questions? Representative Ward.
HDDC, Mr. Gomez. This looks like an exciting bill. Something seems to be missing, and that is the pharmaceutical industry, which we have as a growing potential. Is that in consideration tangentially, or is it something off the radar screen?
I mean, I can bring some questions back. Unfortunately, Director Len has been called to other meetings, but if pharmaceuticals fall under technology, it would be something under consideration, but we haven't heard of any potential projects.
I know the chair called out Oceanette with Patrick Sullivan, who, by the way, has his FDA COVID test published, but, you know, he was kind of putting his hand in hand for the last year and a half. Nobody paid any attention. He's got a hundred PhDs on his staff. He's got a real intellectual workforce that potentially can make a new diversified economy with high-paying jobs in pharmaceuticals. That was the first. Second question, what about the sports center? Are you going to, is there anything with the new stadium you guys are thinking about in terms of the sports center of the Pacific?
We are not actually part of the stadium. I mean, I don't know, I can defer to DBED.
But you're diversifying the economy, though. That's my point.
In the technology, in the technology silo.
Only technology.
Where we're Hawaii Technology Development.
So space tourism is not in your kulian, either, then? It does say aerospace in the bill.
It could be if there's a aerospace, if aerospace gets put into, yeah, that's another bill that's on there.
DBED dropped, sir. DBED dropped the ball on space tourism, but that's, that's another story. I know the Big Island may have a position on that. Okay, my, my point is, we really need you guys to do a great job, because, look, half of our families, according to the ALIS studies, are not even making enough to survive. So the more you can innovate and create particularly high-paying jobs, the better.
Yeah, that's our goal.
Thank you very much for testifying. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. Any further questions? Seeing none, we're going to move on to House Bill 395 HD-1 relating to Hawaii Technology Development Corporation. First up is HDDC.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair. HDDC stands on written testimony in support.
Okay, thank you very much. Sorry, this was, I skipped one. Anyway, Oceanette on this one? Still not here? Okay, next up is the Chamber of Commerce.
Aloha, the Chamber of Commerce of Hawaii stands on written testimony in support. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Seeing none, members, any questions? Seeing none, we're going to move on to the next bill, House Bill 396 HD-1 relating to Hawaii Technology Development Corporation. First up is HDDC.
Thank you, Chair. HDDC stands on our written testimony in support.
Okay, thank you. Oceanette? Not here. Okay, Chamber of Commerce.
The Chamber of Commerce stands on written testimony in support. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, members. Is there anyone else wishing to testify? Okay, seeing none, members, any questions? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to the next bill, House Bill 991 relating to Hawaii Technology Development Corporation. First up is HDDC. Okay. Come back.
Sorry about that. Len Higashi, Hawaii Technology Development Corporation, we stand on our testimony and support this measure.
Okay, thank you. Chamber of Commerce.
Hi, Chair. The Chamber of Commerce of Hawaii stands on its written testimony in support. Thank you.
Thank you. Hawaii Food Industry Association.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, Alexis Chapman for HFIA. We stand on our testimony in support and are available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. DBED, do you want to testify?
Yep.
Thank you, sir. We stand our testimony in strong support. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Seeing none, members, any questions? Seeing none, we're going to move on to the next bill, House Bill 844 HD-1 relating to the University of Hawaii. First up is, first up is nobody. Okay, we don't have any testifiers on this measure. Is there anyone else here wishing? Please come forward.
Aloha, Kayaka, Chair, Vice Chair, and the Fin Committee, Angela Melody Young, testifying on behalf of CARES in strong support. And the purpose of this act is to provide additional opportunities for international and regional partnerships at the University of Hawaii Maui's College of, yeah, in Maui. And then so, and it also appropriates funds. So any opportunities and initiatives to provide an equitable environment for students is a good thing, so thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to testify? Okay, seeing none, members, question? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to House Bill 1245 HD-1 relating to ambulance. First up is Department of Health.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, Dr. Al Bronstein for the Department of Health, and we will stand on our written testimony, offering comments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next up is AMR, I think. Anyone else wishing to testify? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to questions. Questions, members? No questions. Moving on to the next bill, House Bill 1486 HD-1 relating to Kupuna Care, Kupuna Care Program. First up is Department of Health, Executive Office of Aging.
Good morning, Chair Yamashita, Vice Chair Kitagawa, and members of the committee. I'm Debbie Shimizu, representing the Executive Office on Aging for Caroline Carirow, our director. We have strong support for this bill as long as it does not reduce or replace the administrative budget. And just for your information, in 2021, the Executive Office on Aging's base budget was reduced by 1.9 million for this program. So an appropriation for 1.9 million would make our base budget whole for this line item.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up is Jeanette L. Onzu.
Okay, you're up, Jeanette.
Aloha, ladies and gentlemen, and Chair. I am testifying in support of House Bill 1486. Many people in the state face challenges of work and caregiving, like our families. So I'm sharing with, this with you as an example. I'm sixty-nine, I'm still working and enjoying my job. I make about the same per hour as our paid caregivers. So I'm kind of working to keep medical benefits, and, and I like my job. My husband is seventy-two years old and has Parkinson's, and he's blind, and he falls a lot, a lot of trips to the ER. He has not worked for twenty-two years, and this has been a slow but a steady decline in health. Mental and cognitive issues have come up and frustrates caregiving a lot. It requires 24/7 care. We're fortunate to have some assistance with care from a family member, Brother Ed, who you'll meet, and he needs to work to, himself, and after many years, he's suffering from caregiving, or from burnout in caregiving. In a typical day, I take care of my husband in the morning, and then I go to work, and then Ed takes over for midday, and then we have a paid caregiver come in, in the evening, for, just for twenty hours a week, and she takes care of walking him and bathing. We need more paid caregiver time to stop this burnout, and we need more funds. The Kupuna Care Act, as I understand it, has been supported but not funded. We need to fund this to at least the tune of $2 million. Mahalo Nui Loa.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up is Edwards Joel.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. I'm going to make this faster because my sister has kindly covered most of what we wanted to testify to. And to be honest, I'm really kind of tired. Spent yesterday in the emergency department. Burnout is a real risk, and I need backup, and a lot of fellow constituents here across the islands need the same backup. So this is a very valuable program. We are going to, over time, particularly with progressive diseases, over time, more caregiver support is needed, not less, unfortunately, and we're facing that curve. With regard to the funding of the program, I also want to ditto that I think it's important to track the demographic population matrix. So if 1.8 million was appropriate a few years ago, two, you know, two million would be my estimate in terms of what would be needed today because our, of the population who needs this program hasn't, has likely increased just from, just, just because of Unless there is some barrier to the implementation of the program, I would recommend that you set the date of effective to the date of enactment. Right now, I think it's, it's the year 3000, and obviously, we can't wait several centuries. Mahalo so much for, for hearing my testimony, and I hope you will move forward and fund this program. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, is there anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Seeing none, members, any questions? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to the next bill, House Bill 38 HD-1 relating to non-general funds tax foundation. Okay, not present. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Seeing none, we're going to move on to the next measure, House Bill 565 HD-1 relating to self-insured, insurance against property casualty, property and casualty risk. Okay, first up is Budget and Finance? I guess not here. Next is Dags.
Chair, Vice Chair, we stand on our written testimony, providing comments on this measure.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Okay, seeing none, members, any questions? Representative Ward.
Does anyone know how much money we will save by self-insuring? Ballpark, if anything?
I'm Tracy Kitagawa from the Risk Management Office. It all depends on what losses that we experience, so there's no way to, to track. We can kind of show.
How were your losses last year? What were your losses?
Last year, as far as all losses, we filed claims with the insurance company, but those have not come to a settlement or anything like that.
How about the year before?
So, same thing. We, we've, like, in the last year or so, we've had about fifty claims turned into the insurance company, and those are all still pending, so we don't have, you know, what the final outcome is, is going to be.
How about the year before that year?
Same thing.
About four years ago?
Well, we can give you-
Five years ago?
Ten years.
Okay, ten.
About.
I mean, it sounds like a great idea, but if you ever got a metric that says, hey, we're going to save so much money, and this is, I know, in honor of the former representative-
Yeah, I think it's a matter of-
This is a goldmine.
How lucky do you feel from a standpoint of having to fund for an insurance policy in increments, or await for one large event to happen and come up with the money all at once, right?
Right.
So that's kind of what we'll evaluate as far as what the losses were historically, what the insurance policies could or could not cover, and come up with some analysis
Could you do the ten-year, get the chair to, the information to the chair?
Sure, yeah, we had testimony turned in last year. This bill was present last year, so we turned in that last year.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. Representative Kobayashi.
This study that's undergoing?
Yes.
It's only for conversion to a fully self-insured program?
Yes, so Dags purchases a handful of policies, right? So it's to address those policies and-
I thought that the discussion last year was both for fully insured and partially self-insured.
Well, understand, when we have certain policies, we have deductibles, large deductibles.
Oh, okay.
So that, at times, people conceive that, perceive that as being the self-insurance part of the insurance program.
So the study that's going to be finished in September of this year includes only fully insured program, but with deductibles?
They'll take a look at the whole spectrum from a standpoint of being totally self-insured, where there's no insurance policies at all, or a combination of insurance policies and what maybe deductibles may apply would be best for insurance policy to have a deductible at what amount.
So that whole range will be in that study?
Yeah. And it's a matter of what the numbers come out to be, what's affordable or not.
Yeah, thanks. Okay, thank you very much. Members, any further questions? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to the next bill, House Bill 1363 HD-1, or HD-2 relating to, relating to taxation. First up is HHFDC.
Good morning, Chair Yamashita, Vice Chair Kitagawa, Members of the Committee, Denise Matsubara for HHFDC. We strongly support this measure. I just want to say that this measure represents a paradigm shift for the counties to actually take control of the destiny of their infrastructure in terms of drainage water, roads, wastewater, which is the foundation for housing that they so desperately need. This also represents another source of revenue to pay for that very critical foundation. Thank you very much, Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up, Department of Taxation.
Kristin Sakamoto for DOTAX. We stand on our written testimony, providing comments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Tax Foundation? Are you on? Okay. Maui County Office of the Mayor.
Chair Yamashita, Vice Chair Kitagawa, Members of the Finance Committee, Scott Keruia, Acting Finance Director, speaking on behalf of Mayor Bisson. We're here today speaking in strong support of HB 1363 relating to the county of Maui having the opportunity to adopt a surcharge on sales tax. As you all know, Maui County is the only county that hasn't enacted it yet, so we appreciate the opportunity. We also appreciate HD-2 amendment, which allow the county possibly even starting it earlier, January 1st, 2024, provided that we do pass an enabling ordinance for the county, before the county council. We also know that the administration and the council both are aware of the timeliness of passing this amended ordinance, or this ordinance, which will give us time, but we also have been working with DOTAX to make sure that they have ample time to adopt the changes that they need to do as well. So we appreciate the opportunity to testify and hear for any comments. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. Alice Lee, Chair.
Good morning, Chair Yamashita, and Members of the House Committee on Finance. Thank you for the opportunity to testify in support of this important measure. We fully support the statements of our Finance Director, Scott Keruia. The Maui County Council has not had the opportunity to take a formal position on this yet, but believe me, it is a high priority, and we will be addressing it as soon as possible. The county surcharge would provide incentives to developers to design and construct infrastructure in a manner that takes into account state and county planning objectives, long-range planning, and island-wide cohesion, as well as public-private partnerships. We ask for your support, and thank you for your support. We ask for your support and thank you for your hard work and dedication. Aloha.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Okay, seeing none, members, any questions? Representative Ward.
Thank you, Chair. The first testifier, I'm sorry, I missed your name. The one who said, "We finally have our own destiny," or "We have our own control," that caught my attention. What is the state not doing that makes this such a priority? You said, "We finally have a," kind of a home rule statement you made. What has faltered that makes this such importance?
Thank you very much for the question, Representative Ward. Denise Matsubara from HHFDC. I was merely stating that this is the opportunity for the counties to take control of their destiny and be involved.
Because they haven't had control? Because what, the state is bullying them? Or, I'm trying to get to the problem area. Usually, these bills are solutions.
So it's not so much a problem as much as an opportunity for them. This is not our bill, but we do support the bill's author in this effort. And so it's more of an opportunity. DRF Fund is usually, it's a state fund that is normally used to fund infrastructure and we have done a number of infrastructure projects, but this represents another stream of revenue and an opportunity for the county to be really involved. And we normally partner with them, but this represents another stream of revenue as well.
I just discovered the author of the bill, so clearly understand.
Thank you.
I will not reveal his name. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
HHFDC, anybody else wishing to testify? HHFDC, you know what, Representative Ward, I'll try to help you understand. I'll ask the questions. So over the years, has it, has infrastructure been passed primarily to the developer and not necessarily a comprehensive plan by the counties?
Correct. That's exactly what it's trying to address as well. Ordinarily, especially for onsite infrastructure, that cost has to be borne by someone. Usually, it's gonna be borne by the buyer or the renter, because the developer has to pass it on somewhere. So DRF, the DRF Fund normally picks up for that, but this would be another source that would add on to it, so there can be some leveraging and of course, ultimately, it's to reduce the cost to the buyer and the rent to the renter.
So when the counties make the developer pay for it, do they eat it or they pass it on to the cost of the home?
I would say typically, it's, all gets passed on to the consumer.
So typically, it makes the house more expensive, correct?
Yes.
And our goal is to make it more affordable?
Yes. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you very much.
That was a point of the bill. Thank you.
Members, any further questions? Representative Kobayashi.
This is a comment from Maui County. You have a December 2023 deadline on this, in this bill. When we passed the original bill, we gave the counties nine months instead of six months. So, I mean, that's for later.
Yeah, Chair, if you don't mind. Yeah, we are on track. We're looking to pass the enabling ordinance by August 1st, 2023, to give DOTAC enough time to make the changes on their end.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you very much. Any further questions? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna move on to the next bill, House Bill 978 HD1 relating to the purchase of Health and Human Services. First up is DAGs.
Chair, Vice Chair, members of the Finance Committee, Keith Regan, Comptroller for the State of Hawaii. We stand in support of HB 978 HD1 and stand on our written testimony. Aloha, Chair.
Thank you very much. Next up is State Procurement Office.
Good morning Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Bonika Hukui, Acting State Administrator for the Procurement Office. We stand on our written testimony in strong support. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna move on to the next bill. House, well, I'm sorry. Questions? Okay, no question. Okay, we're gonna move on to the next bill, House Bill 875 HD1 relating to education. First up is Department of Education. Did I skip something? Okay, I missed one. I'll go back after. Please go forward.
Good morning Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Sean Arai, Director of Personnel Development, testifying on behalf of Superintendent Tahashi. Department stands on our written testimony in support of 875 HD1. Here, answer any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so, let's see, HSTA?
Aloha Chairs, members of the committee. Laverne Moore, speaking on behalf of Osutu, Junior President of the Hawaii State Teachers Association. The HSTA supports this bill and they stand on their written testimony. I am gonna tell the teacher's story. I'm always the one that says we have a crisis in the school. If you look at the posting that just came out, there are so many openings for teachers, especially in your neighbor islands and hard-to-staff school. That's a crisis. We're already gonna start a new year without teachers in the classroom. This bill provides apprenticeship, which is a comprehensive bill. What it does is it puts the teacher candidate right into the classroom to learn hands-on what is going on and what is needed. And they will be given comprehensive services, funding, teaching, tutoring, help with getting their license. This is the way to go. You wanna provide our students with quality education rather than having many classrooms being taught by principals, VPs, counselors. We need to get to this problem and this is great because it puts the program in the DOE, making the DOEs responsible for this program, and it also makes it available to get federal funds through the jobs program, the vocational funding. So you would get, once you establish this program, then they can go after federal funds to supplement. So please consider this bill. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Please come forward.
Aloha Kayaka, Chair, Vice Chair, and the Fin Committee. Angela Melody Young, testifying in strong support on behalf of CARES. Hawaii Public Schools have been facing a severe teacher shortage for years with little support to mitigate this concern. In 2018 to 2019, Hawaii State Teachers Association data says that there were more than 1,000 emergency hires and long-term substitutes. The purpose of this act is to create and sustain a teacher-apprenticeship program in order to support, recruit, develop, and retain teachers for public schools. This "grow your own" concept for a teacher-apprenticeship program has the potential to increase the retention rate of Hawaii's public school teachers by providing better mentoring experiences and financially supporting student teachers while they complete their workforce training. A teacher-apprenticeship program also has the potential to increase local recruitment of teachers, developing teachers who are already in the community but providing them with the resources to succeed in their respective fields. This in turn benefits students by ensuring that they are taught by educators who understand their needs and the needs of the broader school community. This act appropriates funds, but it doesn't say how much, to be deposited into a special fund, which will be administered and used by the department to support the goals of the Hawaii Teacher Apprenticeship Program and related costs. Because this act helps and supports teachers and students, it creates an equitable learning environment. CARES urges you to support it. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify? Questions, members? Representative Ward.
Chair, I have a question to the highest, or the, sorry, the longest-serving member of the DOE and HSTA. Is she here? Oh, Laverne Moore, where are you?
Right here.
Okay, may I ask you a question? You didn't get the identity marker. She has served over five decades, if I understand. Yes, yes, I'm asking, yeah, I have a question.
Okay.
Does this bill help retention of teachers, is the question? And is it practicing any other place that it gets them an orientation? But according to the bill, the number of teachers leaving Hawaii to find jobs elsewhere has increased by 70% since 2012. The workforce is increasingly an out-of-state teacher workforce. So the impact, I guess, Laverne, I'm asking, what do you see?
Okay, number one, impact is housing. So housing is critical. Now, with this apprenticeship program, we're looking at the teachers coming from their own communities so that they already would be at home and they would be at the university into the program. And why I really personally like this program, they would be in the school and they would have support from the teachers in the school and they would know the community because they're coming from the community.
And has it worked in other places? In other ways, is this a pilot of something that's already been done that we're replicating, or is this a brand-new from the drawing board?
Sorry, I don't really know that.
You're not sure? Okay.
All I know is when I read the bill, I loved it.
It sounds good. I'm seeing if it's got a...
Because, you know, when we have student teachers, poor thing, this bill, you can work while learning, whereas student teachers are not allowed to work when they're doing student teaching. And being old Mother Hubbard, I'm always there helping the young teacher. We lose a lot of teachers that go into a community that they don't know. They don't have the support. So because they don't have the support, they leave. Where apprenticeship, you will have, they, they come in, they go in, you will have the total support of the whole school and the community.
But you didn't have an apprenticeship program, but look how long you've stayed. How, what, how did you stay for so long without one?
Because I love teaching.
Okay. I do want to put you on the spot. Thank you, Laverne. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. Members, any further questions? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna, my apologies, we're gonna go backwards to House Bill 977 HD1 relating to the purchase of Health and Human Services. I guess this was my unconscious attempt to make it go faster, but... So first up is DAGs.
Chair, Vice Chair, members of the Finance Committee, we stand on our written testimony in support of HB 977 HD1. Mahalo, Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. State Procurement.
Good morning again Chair, Vice Chair. Bonika Hukui, Acting Administrator, State Procurement Office. We stand on our written testimony in strong support. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Okay, seeing none, questions, members? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna move on to the next bill, House Bill 1184 HD1 relating to procurement. First up is State Procurement.
Good morning Chair, Vice Chair. Bonika Hukui. We stand on our written testimony. We support the intent of the bill. However, we have provided testimony for amended language, which is mostly for the arrangement of the language within the bill, not necessarily changing much except for to clarify and for continuity. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Next is County of Maui Office of the Mayor.
Chair, Vice Chair, members of the Finance Committee, Scott Teruia, Acting Finance Director, on behalf of the County of Maui, was strong in support of this measure as many off-island counties lack a lot of constituent or consultants for HRS 464 requirements like surveyors, et cetera. A lot of times, you only get one consultant and it requires us to often continue to post or cancel the project. So having this measure would really help us. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Next up is Division of Purchasing, County of Kauai.
Good morning Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Ernie Barrera, Procurement Chief for the County of Kauai. We stand on our previously written testimony and I am available for any questions that the committee might have. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Okay, thank you very much. Next is American Council of Engineering Companies, Hawaii.
Good afternoon, or good morning Chair and Vice Chair. This is Sandy Wong on behalf of the American Council of Engineering Companies, Hawaii. We did submit two written testimonies. We are opposing the bill at the moment simply because we are afraid of the unintended consequences that it may erode qualification-based selection for professional services. I will tell you though, that we have been working with the stakeholders, including the County of Kauai, AIA, and the State Procurement Office. My understanding of that position is that we prefer the language that is in the Senate Companion, the SD1. However, we do, we do recommend a few more tweaks, which I understand the County of Kauai is receptive to, and we have included that language in our written testimony and we ask that you insert it in the SD2, HD2. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next is AIA Hawaii State Council.
Good morning Chair, Vice Chair. My name is Reed Mizue with AIA Hawaii State Council. We stand on our written testimony, providing comments. We do have some language in there and justification for moving forward with the HD2 possibly. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next is ACEC Hawaii ASO.
Chair, that's me again, and so I think I've said what I needed to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone else wishing to testify? Seeing none, members, questions? Okay, seeing none.
Chair, sorry, Chair.
Oh, sorry.
Hi, thanks.
Representative Kofrin, thank you.
Sorry for my tardiness this morning. Thank you, Chair. And for possibly DAGs or Mr. Teruia from the County of Maui, maybe County of Maui. Mahalo, Mr. Teruia, for being here. Good to see you. For procurement, how do you see this? Because, you know, as the DEM had issues, sole sourcing type issues had gone down, how, is this gonna address that?
Sure. Well, first of all, we do RFP, these contracts out. The hardest part is that we, very often, for the very difficult architects and highly specialized projects requiring license, et cetera, we normally get one or two bids. So it's not that we haven't skirted the process of procurement, it's just a matter of not being able to get three qualified people on the list so we can choose from there.
Okay. And so how are we gonna get, I mean, are you just gonna lower standards to get more, the third, you know, party in line here?
No, we're not changing any of our standards. It's just the process of eliminating the need to get three and that one or two will qualify and we're able to move forward. That's all. Not changing the standards.
Okay. Okay, thank you again for your time.
Okay, thank you very much. Members, any further questions? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna move on to the next bill, House Bill 143 HD1 relating to the reduction in ignition propensity cigarette program. First up is Hawaii State Fire Council.
Good morning Chair Yamashita, Vice Chair Kitagawa, members of the Finance Committee. My name is Gary Lam. I'm testifying on behalf of the State Fire Council. You have our written testimony, we stand in support of it, and I'm available for questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Okay, seeing none, members, any questions? Okay, we're gonna move on to the next bill, House Bill 1206 HD2 relating to the State Permitting Office. First up is DAGs.
Chair, Vice Chair, members, Keith Regan, Comptroller for the State of Hawaii. We stand on our written testimony, providing comments on HB 1206 HD2. Mahalo, Chair.
Thank you. Okay, next is Department of Planning and Permitting, Curtis Lum. Okay, is there anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Seeing none, members, any questions? Representative Ward.
Thank you. Mr. Regan, please. Mr. Regan, does this put the state in the driver's seat and puts the counties out of the permitting business because they're so slow and inefficient? And can you do the job any better without any, having had any experience in this area?
Chair, I don't think this would put the counties out of business as it relates to permitting. Oh, Keith Regan, Comptroller for the State of Hawaii. But I do believe it just is another tool in our toolbox for us to be able to push our projects forward quicker. Permitting delays equal additional costs to the state.
Okay, for the state buildings you're talking about?
For state facilities, correct.
How many buildings did the state build last year or the year before?
I don't have the number in front of me right now.
A lot of them?
Maybe a handful of permits were actually requested. So permits can be anything from facilities to, you know, we're doing renovations, you know, within facilities, you know, electrical upgrades, plumbing upgrades, et cetera, so... plumbing upgrades, et cetera, so...
But sir, on page two of the bill, it says a person may obtain a state permit from the Department of Accounting and General Services in lieu of obtaining a county building infrastructure. People on O'ahu are really frustrated about the slow permitting process, very, very frustrated. So are they gonna come to you? Are they gonna get quick service? Is my question.
It would only be for state facilities. So these are state projects.
This one, unless I'm misreading it, it says a person may come and get it in lieu of the county permit.
For state facilities. I believe there's language in there that identifies state facilities.
For any time to work, Regan. Okay, I stand corrected.
It's okay. Thank you, Representative. My apologies.
Okay, Representative Lamasal.
I hope you can do the job better, is my point.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Director. I just wanted to see how much it would cost the state to establish such pilot program.
Yeah, so we're recommending, thank you, Representative, Chair, Vice Chair. We're asking, we're estimating an approximate cost of about $500,000 to stand up the operation, but that does not include the positions that would be required. We're looking at probably between 10 to 12 positions that are gonna be necessary in order for us to do this pilot project. Primarily, it's because we're creating our own permitting office, right? And it's not as though we have resources that are standing by at Dags that can just step in and, you know, take over these responsibilities and wanna make sure that we do it right. Because it's a pilot project, these could be temporary positions. They wouldn't have to be permanent positions. Actually, that would give us a lot of flexibility, I think, if we could get exempt positions to be able to fill these quickly. So that's kind of what we're looking at, Representative.
Chair, I have a follow-up.
Please.
So if you could provide maybe a ballpark number with the stand-up amount and also the positions, what would you say?
You know, we're looking at professional positions like engineers, inspectors. Yeah, just take about $150,000, multiply it by 12 and that'll give you approximately where you think we should be. And that would be with fringe and everything, right, so...
Maybe 1.5.
Somewhere in that ballpark, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Representative Kobayashi, followed by Ward.
Yes.
Would this include UH, DOE, Department of Transportation?
It says state facility, so I think it would cover all of, anything that is a state facility.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. And so there's a lot of smaller permits, right, that are requested that this would, I think, help us move forward on.
Okay, Representative Ward.
Sir, the city and county of Honolulu opposes the bill and they state that the state already has authority to exempt itself from the county permitting process. So are you recreating another wheel? Because it says, hey, you guys have already got your own permitting exemptions. Is it true?
Yes, Representative, it is true that we do have the ability to exempt ourselves. The challenge, though, comes that when we exercise that exemption, hooking up or connecting to city services or getting the necessary certificate of occupancy is a challenge that the state has to face and overcome because the counties are going to ask, you know, that we comply with their specific requirements.
So you're exempt, but not exempt then, you're saying?
Essentially, we still have to go through some of the process that is involved in the permitting.
Have you ever tried to enforce that exemption?
Yeah, we've tried it a couple of times on projects and we've just found it to be very cumbersome for us. And, you know, it actually creates more problems than benefits. So we just prefer not to go through the exemption process because of the challenges that we face at the end of the project, trying to get, you know, the certificate of occupancy, trying to get connected to county services, et cetera.
I hope you succeed in this pilot because that will hopefully provoke the jealousy of the counties that are doing a very slow job in this process. Showing our economy also.
I do wanna say, though, one last thing is that, you know, we do appreciate the hard work of the counties. They have been as supportive as they can be given this situation with resource demands.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, Representative Kobayashi. Why don't you just issue your own certificate of occupancy? I mean, this bill says that the counties shall issue the certificate of occupancy and that, as you know, is not instantaneous.
Right.
So if you, that is the state issued the certificate of occupancy, that might cut out some time.
It's a good point, Representative. Thank you for that. I think if we were, if the law allowed for us to issue our own certificate of occupancy and that we could present that to the counties and say that this is the official certificate of occupancy for the state project, I think that would resolve that issue that you raised.
You could resolve it with a couple of word changes.
Certainly, certainly, Representative.
Page three.
Okay, thank you. Members, any further questions? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, members, we're gonna take a short recess, well, maybe not a short recess. We're gonna come back at approximately 12 o'clock for decision-making and then we're gonna move... And then we're gonna move on to the next agenda, so recess.
Okay, we're gonna reconvene the committee on finance to, for decision making on our first agenda. First up is House Bill 1150 HD1 relating to infected species members. Recommendation is that we're gonna pass this out as an HD2, blanking out appropriation and tech. Any discussion? Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 1150 HD1 with amendments. Chair and vice chair vote aye. Representative Ayew.
Aye.
Representative Chun.
Aye.
Representative Cochran.
Aye.
Representative Garrett.
Aye.
Representative Kahaloa.
Aye.
Representative Kila.
Aye.
Representative Kobayashi.
Aye.
Representative Lamosau.
Aye.
Representative Morikawa.
Aye.
Representative Nishimoro.
Aye.
Representative Poi Poi.
Aye.
Representative Taki Noogee.
Aye.
Representative Alcos.
Aye.
Representative Ward. Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you very much, members. We're moving on to House Bill 521 HD, no, no HD. Okay, so, uh, we're gonna move this out as an HD1. We're gonna be defecting it, and, um, members, I know there's some problems with this bill, and, um, we're just gonna be moving it forward for further discussion to see what else we can figure out on this, uh, and technical amendments. Any discussion?
Chair, I totally concur with you on that, and it would be nice if the department would drill down into what they call these, it's outbreaks, you know, whether it was diarrhea or sore stomach, but no one has died, and they make it sound like it's really, you know, fatal kind of stuff, but it's not, so if they could give us more data, I think we could be more intelligently voting on this in the future. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Representative. Kila.
Thank you, Chair, and noting the concerns, I'm just gonna have to register a no vote. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Representative Kobayashi.
Same, uh, no vote, especially given, um, that there was testimony saying that FDA, federal, FDA cannot find a practicable means of testing for bacteria. So, it seems that it is a long-going issue, but without solving the testing problem, I think we put people in danger. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Representative Lamosau.
Same request, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
Same, same request.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, Vice Chair for vote.
Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 521 with amendments. Are there any reservations? Representative Garrett reservations, Representative Kahaloa reservations, Representative Poi Poi reservations. Okay, noting the no votes of Representatives Cochran, Kila, Kobayashi, and Lamosau, are there any additional no votes? Okay, sing non-Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you very much. Members, we're gonna be moving on to House Bill 1373 HD1 relating to workforce. Uh, we're gonna be moving this out also as an HD1, blanking out the percentage, blanking out the dollar amount, and it's already defective, so, and some technical amendments. Any discussion? Okay, Vice Chair, HD2.
Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 1373 HD1 with amendments, noting the presence of all members who will be noted present for the rest of this agenda, as well as the previous measure on the agenda. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you very much. We're moving on to House Bill 999 HD1 as-is. Any discussion? Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 999 HD1 as-is. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, moving on, House Bill 395 HD1. Members, we're gonna deal with this measure in the budget, so I'm gonna defer. Moving on to the next bill, House Bill 396 HD1, I'm also gonna deal with this measure in the budget also, so we're gonna also defer this one. And now, moving on to the next bill, House Bill 991 HD1, recommendation is as-is. Any discussion? Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 991 HD1 as-is. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you very much. House Bill 844 HD1, we're also gonna deal with this in the budget, members, so defer. Moving on to the next bill, House Bill 1245 HD1 relating to ambulance as-is. Any discussion? Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 1245 HD1 as-is. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to House Bill 1486 HD1 as-is. Discussion? Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 1486 HD1 as-is. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to House Bill 38 HD1 as-is. Any discussion? Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 38 HD1 as-is. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to House Bill 561 HD1. Members, um, right now, we're gonna keep it as-is where it's blank, but the intention is that at some point, we will put a corpus in there to be, um, to deal with it going forward, and, um, and we will be not moving on it, but putting the vehicle in place until the study is done in September. Um, so for right now, as-is. Any discussion?
Chair question.
Vice Chair.
Will, will the study indicate what the savings are versus buying into the?
There's currently an appropriation that we put in last year to do a study on the, um, property casualty, um, fund.
So we should get the data, and it will be?
That's right. So we're gonna put the vehicle in place, but wait for the study to put the guts of everything else. Thank you. Okay, thank you very much. As-is, Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 565 HD1 as-is. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you very much, members. We're moving on to House Bill 1363 HD2. We're gonna move this out as an HD3. We're gonna be, um, putting some clarifying language to deal with, uh, tax foundations concerns, uh, and tech, some technical amendments. Any discussion? Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 1363 HD2 with amendments. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Oh, reservations by Representative Ward?
Yes.
Okay. Any additional reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to House Bill 978 HD1, we're gonna be moving this out as an HD2, blanking out the appropriation and tech. Any discussion?
Chair.
Yes.
Um, I'm gonna, uh, go with reservations on this one, 'cause I don't think that this addresses my sole-sourcing and in procurement, uh, issues at this time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 9?
Oh, wait, sorry, sorry, sorry. I, can I retract that? I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong item.
Okay.
Chair, sorry, I'm in support. So sorry.
Okay, thank you very much. Vice Chair.
Okay. Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 978 HD1 with amendments. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, House Bill 977 HD1 as-is. Any discussion? Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 977 HD1 as-is. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, House Bill 875 HD1 as-is. Any discussion? Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 875 HD1 as-is. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you. House Bill 1184 HD1 as-is. Discussion? Representative Cochran followed by Kobayashi.
Here's the one that I meant to say WR on.
Okay, thank you. Representative Kobayashi.
Um, what about the amendment suggested by a state procurement office that, that's already in the Senate bill?
Okay, yeah, um, we will be, um, letting, uh, subject matter deal with that part, and then we'll see which vehicle we'll use in conference. Okay. Thank you very much. Any further comment? Okay, Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 1184 HD1 as-is, noting the reservations of Representative Cochran. Are there additional reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, House Bill 143 HD1 as-is. Discussion? Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 143 HD1 as-is. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. House Bill 1206 HD2 as-is. Discussion? Representative Cochran.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, this one also, I'm gonna WR its states, and I think the city and counties, um, testimony their issue about the state to connect to county infrastructure without any county approval, so I have concerns about that. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Representative Ward.
Uh, just, just a comment, Chair. Given the backlog that I think slows the economy by the slow bus, uh, permitting process, which is really a horrendous, uh, issue, I have a friend who had a electrical fire in their attic, and it was a hole that they said they could get a permit to fill in eight months, which is totally ridiculous, until they pushed it and got an emergency exemption. The, the system is broken. Hopefully, this is the here, and I would commend the good representative from Diamond Head who said, "Why don't we have an amendment in this bill that says the counties can't give their own certificate of occupancy?"
I think he said the state can do its own certificate.
Sorry?
I think he said the state can do its own.
Yeah, the state can give their own certificate of occupancy, if I missed. I, I think that's a great idea, and I hope the Chair would consider that.
Okay, thank you very much, and, um, your concerns can be addressed in a different bill, it's not this one, but, uh, okay, any further discussions? Okay, Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 1206 HD2 as-is. Are there any reservations other than Representative Cochran? Representative Poi Poi? Okay, any additional reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you, members. We're gonna reset this one, and we're gonna move into the next agenda. Reset. We're gonna reset this one, and we're gonna move into the next agenda. Reset. The Committee on Finance will come to order to hear our second agenda. First up is House Bill 193-HD1 relating to energy efficiency portfolio standards. First up is DCCA, Consumer Advocate.
Hello, and good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Dean Shino with the Division of Consumer Advocacy. You have a written testimony, stand on our comments, available for questions if any. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Hawaii State Energy Office on Zoom.
Nope. Aloha.
Oh.
Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Maria Tomy, Hawaii State Energy Office, you have our written testimony in support. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to the PUC.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name is Grace Rolf with the PUC. You have our written testimony, and we'd be happy to answer questions if there are any. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is Ulupono.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Micah Munikati here on behalf of Ulupono Initiative. We'll stand on our testimony in support of this measure. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up is Blue Planet Foundation.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Jody Robinson with the Blue Planet Foundation will stand on our testimony in support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Justice Carson for Hawaii Energy, and we'll stand on our written testimony as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else wishing to testify? Please come forward.
Angela Melody Young, testifying on behalf of CARES, and aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, and the Fin Committee. So in 2008, the state partnered with the Federal Department of Energy to create Hawaii Clean Energy, to create the Hawaii Clean Energy Initiative, which included goals for energy efficiency. The goal of the Hawaii Clean Energy Initiative is to achieve 100% clean energy by 2045. Subsequently, Act 155 from 2009 codified these energy efficiency goals. Act 155 codifies the energy efficiency portfolio standards for the Public Utilities Community within, within the HR, oh, the Public Utilities Commission within the HRS So because the Hawaii Clean Energy Initiative and Act 155 are in alignment with the Federal Department of Energy's goals, there is a need to further extend and outline the standards again, because there has been updates from the Department of Energy. The Department of Energy pioneers game-changing scientific research and continues to advance nuclear security initiatives and cleanup missions. DOE has made huge strides in regards to the climate crisis, and as the USA's Solutions Department, the DOE is moving to achieve ambitious goals of cutting carbon emissions in half by 2030 and reaching 100% clean electricity by 2035. So therefore, it is essential to support this measure. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Seeing the members' questions. Representative Ward.
The State Energy Office, please. Thank you for your testimony. What, what would you say is the science behind this bill extending the deadline?
That it's cheaper to save a kilowatt hour than to generate one, and has less impact overall. So energy efficiency needs to come first and supports all the other objectives in the energy sector.
So we got ahead of ourselves, so to speak?
No, no, we, the, the previous one ends in 2030, and we have an objective for 2045, so we need to continue the efficiency measures and the efficiency efforts.
Using your, your statement, it's better to conserve energy first, what, how far are we along the path of doing the energy conservation?
Let's see, so...
Given what you have as an outline of what we do Phase One conservation, and then?
Oh, no, you, you gotta do them in parallel, but for every kilowatt hour that you save, you don't have to generate it.
Okay, what, how are we along that road of saving? Is my question.
So as the technologies keep improving, we have to keep up with it and continue to make these efforts to, to save energy.
So you don't have a percentage of how long, how far along we are?
Let's see, the 4,300 gigawatt hours by 2030 was roughly 30% of the projected energy demand in 2030, back when they set the original EEPS, Energy Efficiency Portfolio Standard. So that was 30%, and if we continue on this trajectory, I don't know what it would be, but it seems that at least 30% would be a reasonable objective to continue. But I have not done those calculations.
If you look up at the lights in this room, would you say we're on spot with conservation?
There are vast reserves of energy efficiency all around us.
And we ain't one yet. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions? Okay, seeing none, we're moving on to the next bill, House Bill 1505-HD1 relating to Hawaii Employment Union Health Benefits Trust Fund. Nobody, we have people that submitted testimony, but nobody signed up to testify. Is anybody here wishing to testify on this measure? Seeing none, there's nobody to question, members. We're gonna move on to the next bill, House Bill 1506-HD1 relating to the Hawaii Employment Retirement System of the State of Hawaii. First up is ERS.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Thank you so much for the opportunity to provide testimony. My name is Kristin Varela. I am the newly appointed Chief Investment Officer at ERS. We've provided testimony on this House bill, and ERS stands in support of the bill as amended in the Committee on Energy and Environmental Protection. Happy to answer any questions you all may have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to testify? Seeing none, questions, members? Representative Ward.
To ERS, please. What is the ERS unfunded liabilities presently, and what impact might this bill have on that unfunded liability amount?
Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, thank you so much for the question. Our unfunded liability as of June 30 of 2022 was 13.5 billion. So the appropriation portion of this bill will allow us to continue to chip away at resolution of that unfunded liability. And the encouragement, as opposed to the requirement to invest in environmentally sustainable investments, will allow us to expand our horizon in terms of local investment in the opportunity while still being financially conscious of investment return for our members.
Well, you get the same return, though, is the question. How much of a hit can we expect?
So our first, it's a great question, thank you so much. Our first conversation would always be around financial stability for the plan and the exclusive benefit of our members first and foremost. So because of our financial duty to our members and our beneficiaries, we would put that return before allocation of investment if it was not financially prudent to invest in, in the space. So our number one goal will remain to serve the members and make financially conscious decisions before environmentally conscious decisions.
Okay, cuz 13.5 billion is still a lot of catch-up we've gotta do. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Representative Kobayashi.
In effect, this bill does nothing. Because it encourages, number two, you would put financial returns above that of, how would you say, doing good to the environment.
Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, I wouldn't categorize this as doing nothing. What this bill would allow is an expansion of our current opportunity set. As you all are well aware, high tip, as, as it sits today, has a targeted amount of investment that we can deploy here, as well as a very strongly specified opportunity set. This opens up that opportunity set for us and allows us to explore more opportunity in infrastructure and environmental, environmentally sustainable investments. So although you're right, it does not require, because we cannot sacrifice our fiduciary duty to our members, that has to be first and foremost. It does allow us to view other opportunities within the space and assist us in meeting our returns while assisting in the local environmental sustainability.
Do you need the money to do very little?
So being very blunt, I think the fund always needs money, and we do want to continue to deploy capital locally and support our local initiatives as much as possible. So I would say, yes, we would always welcome the money, and we would welcome the opportunity to expand our opportunity set.
But would you prefer money going to spend down the unfunded liability versus funds to do what this bill asks?
So I, I would frame that as a question, would we rather just have the general appropriation instead of the encouragement to invest locally? I think we can?
No, no, between the two. Between general fund money to decrease the unfunded liability versus general fund money to do something that is encouraged.
Chair, members of the committee, our first and foremost primary duty to our members is to bring down the unfunded liability of our plan. That will be the focus for us and our beneficiaries going forward. So where we can support, we will, and we have been active in the space, deploying capital in our local markets for a while. But at the end of the day, we are focused mostly on sustainability for our members first and foremost.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, further questions? Okay, do you have a fiduciary or a plan to, or a person with the expertise to invest in this area?
Chair, members of the committee, we do not do this in-house. So where our team is not out canvassing the universe solely on their own, we hire experts within the space. Right now, that's deployed through a hired manager that was procured through a normal request for proposal process. They go out and vet initiatives for us and deploy capital specifically. So there is a specialist in the space, yes.
Okay, so is there gonna be an additional cost to hire the specialist? Or is it, you know, part of the?
It's part of the structure. So there's always a cost to investing in any space at all. So we would realize a slight cost alongside that. I can't give you the magnitude of what that cost would be, because it would be in the form of management fees and payments over time. But there's always a cost to transact to the market, absolutely.
Okay, thank you very much. Members, any further questions? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna move on to the next bill, House Bill 949-HD2 relating to renewable energies. First up is DCCA, Consumer Advocate.
Hello, and good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Dean Shino with the Division of Consumer Advocacy, standing on our written testimony in support, available for questions if any. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up is Hawaii Green Infrastructure Authority.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. Gwen Yamamorala, the Hawaii Green Infrastructure Authority. We stand on our written testimony in support. Just wanted to point out that we are respectfully asking for a small amendment to address comments from Budget and Finance. Happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next is Climate Protectors of Hawaii.
Good afternoon, Chair Yamashita, Vice Chair Kitagawa, and members of the committee. Ted Bolan on behalf of the Climate Protectors Hawaii. We are in strong support of this bill. It would democratize access to solar photovoltaic and storage systems for people who are asset-limited, income-constrained, and employed, which is middle and lower-income people. We need to bring on solar. It's gonna help with the climate, and it's gonna help with the, the people who receive it. I would, on behalf of the Climate Protectors, propose an amendment, however, which I think is important for the Finance Committee. And that would be, I had some experience with revolving loan funds as a Deputy Attorney General relating to wastewater, and this proposes a revolving loan fund for solar, the Solar Energy System Revolving Loan Fund. I would suggest that it include language, quote, "federal capitalization grants and other grants, loans, or appropriations," because we wanna get as much of the federal money as we can, and I think this language, this amendment, is necessary to capture all of that. So that's a proposal I would make on behalf of the Climate Protectors. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Okay, thank you very much. Next is Hawaiian Electric on Zoom.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. I'm Kuyu Lanishinstato, appearing for Hawaiian Electric. We will stand on our written testimony in support of this bill. I'm available if there are any questions.
Matthew Geier in support.
Aloha, Matt Geier. I'm in Hawaii Environmental Change Agents and testifying as an individual in support. This bill would help low-income families get solar, which would help them save money on their electric bill, really critical. And if they get a battery system as well, that will help them make more resilient to grid shutdowns or natural disasters that impact the grid. So really important, please support it.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify? Seeing none, members, questions? Representative Keela, followed by Ward.
I have a question for Gwen, please. Hi, Gwen, how are you? I have a question. So in regard to this program, so GEMS is accessing federal funds, right?
No, GEMS is a bond that the state issued. The current GEMS fund, does that allow us to finance batteries? So this one would allow us to finance solar plus storage.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, just to address the federal side. We actually passed a bill in 2021, or you actually passed a bill in 2021, that creates a Clean Energy and Energy Efficiency Revolving Fund that can access federal funds.
So these, so these two separate programs will be funded state monies?
This would be a state-funded program, yes.
Because it's a below-market loan, the revolving fund will kinda help fund itself?
Yes, so the interest earned will be, although below-market, will help us be sustainable and cover our overhead, and the ability to get the principal repaid and re-loaned and reinvested out in additional Alice families will make it a revolving fund.
Is there an educational component when it comes to the folks of Alice families accessing, one, I think, a loan program of this capacity, so the, a leg of financial literature, but two, energy literature and how they can be better practices?
That's a great question. You know, we are working with the Yani community and Ko'olalau community with a Solarize 808 campaign, which comes with energy and financial literacy. So yes, that, we hope to do that statewide.
Oh, awesome, okay. Thank you, Gwen. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Any further question, Representative Kobayashi? Oh, fuck, I'm sorry.
For GEMS again, this would set up a, a new solar energy revolving fund, separate from your current fund.
Yes.
How much do you have in your current fund?
So we have about a little less than 20 million left, and we're looking?
This is from the 50 million?
150 million that was issued in 2014, yes.
I mean, given the rate that you're spending the 50 million?
150 million.
150 million, I'm sorry. Don't you still have money that could be used here?
We do, but we're running out of those funds, and that's why we need additional funds. And also, Representative, as mentioned, our current GEMS financing solar fund doesn't allow us to do batteries. This would allow us to do solar plus batteries, which is very important, not only for resiliency, but to lower our energy costs, and also with new rates, rate schedules coming out, it's going to be even more important.
I mean, GEMS does not have a good record of spending their money.
We did not when the fund was first created in 2013. I think we've improved that check record, and I hope we've proven ourselves to be able to deploy the funds to the underserved rate tiers that we are here to serve.
Yeah, I'd rather see you spend what you already have, rather than, you know, dump another, what, eight digits into the fund. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Representative Ward.
Thank you, Chair. Gwen, anything that helps the Alice families is good, but drilling down into it, access to capital is usually a big barrier, but then it's access to interest rates that are affordable. Do you have an idea what this might entail in terms of interest rates?
Yes, so, thank you, Rep. Ward, that's a great question. You know, through the partnership of the Public Utilities Commission and You know, through the partnership of the Public Utilities Commission and Hawaiian Electric, we have an on-bill repayment financing program that allows us to provide loans without having to take credit reports. That's how we make the financing more accessible to ratepayers who are typically locked out of solar because they're not able to get financing from a bank or a credit union. Currently, our rates are five and a half percent. We plan to continue that, which is still below-market considering if they were to get financing from a bank or credit union, it would be probably seven to eight to nine to 12 percent because their loans are based on risk. However, that being said, we continue, we plan to continue at five and a half for the moderate-income households and drop it to three percent for the low-income households.
Using the international standard of the World Bank or the other funding of developing countries, underdeveloped countries, two to three percent is max, which they call free money, but the access to capital and, in a way, I'm comparing to, hey, you guys can get mortgage now, you Alice guys. Well, depends on how much the interest rate is to get a mortgage. So qualifying for a loan is one thing, or getting, you said, no qualifications, it's you're pre-qualified. You don't have to go through a credit check. The second question is, how many of the Alice families own houses that they're going to put solar on?
We actually estimate about, so we also finance a lot of Department of Hawaiian Homesteaders. We estimate about 75,000 homes will need our help, which is about $3.5 billion in investments that need to be made. Our program also allows for renters, and 43% of our households' rent, we consider them underserved because typically they are also locked out of solar, but our program also assists renters. There's a lot of Alice renters.
Then the question would be, what is the payback, the buyback? When is the break even? If you're a renter, how long do you have to actually stay there to get your money back if you put solar on the roof of your landlord?
Right, good question. So the obligation is actually tied to the meter, utility meter, and not to the renter. So when the tenant moves out, they stop paying, and when a new tenant moves in, they get the, enjoy the benefits of the solar and they start paying for the solar system.
So they must do a mother may I with the landlord before they...
It's disclosed, it's all required to be disclosed.
Is there a consideration that you could have lower interest rates? I'm not sure what the demand is, you give this statistic, 75,000, but how many people are going to actually use this? I'm just really wondering.
I think there will be, there's a lot, especially now with the electric utility rates having gone up about 30% over the last year, there's a lot more demand for this. And this program will help the families that need it the most. You know, on average, our borrowers save between 50 to $500 a month, and that is every month for 20 years that they can then use to pay for food and other necessities.
But we're talking about a $50,000 loan, which, you know, you could buy a new pickup truck for that practically per month. My point is, it would be interesting to see what the demand is after this passes, if it does pass. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. Any further questions? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to the next bill. House Bill 896-HD1 relating to the Department of Education. First up, Department of Education.
Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Kurt Tuguru, good afternoon. Deputy Superintendent for the Department of Education, testifying on behalf of Superintendent Kitayashi. Department stands on its written testimony and support. We're here to answer any questions. We are, we absolutely agree with the previous statement that energy costs for our system has gone up 30% easily, and so we anticipate that it's going to continue to increase. Thank you.
Thank you. Climate Protectors Hawaii.
Good afternoon again, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. This is a bill that, as I understand it, would provide cover, would provide cover for playgrounds. Am I on the right bill?
I'm sorry?
Is this 308?
Yes.
Yes, okay. 896, sorry.
896.
Too many bills.
896.
Yes, thank you very much. We have an opportunity here to protect our keiki from ultraviolet light in the middle of the day if they're out playing, and also perhaps to generate some solar power. So the Climate Protectors are in strong support of this bill. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Matthew Geier.
Aloha, Matthew Geier again, a member of Hawaii Environmental Change Agents and testifying as an individual. Again, the solar plus battery potential for this increases resiliency, and especially, let's say, God forbid, there's a hurricane that hits, people might go to schools to find shelter. They could, if they have solar plus battery in place, they could have their energy backup the next day. So really, really important, could be even lifesaving importance, so please support this.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify, please come forward.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, and the Fin Committee, Angela Melody Young, testifying on behalf of CARES to provide comments. So there are two parts to this measure, to provide renewable energy systems to schools and then to address high-priority play areas because the children at schools are getting affected by sunburn when they play outside. So both, okay, so, and then the act requires the DOE to assess schools and provide the legislature with a list of high-priority schools in need of the installation of renewable energy systems. From the UN, United Nations website, this is their research about renewable energy. Renewable energy is energy derived from natural resources that are replenished at a higher rate than they are used. Sunlight and wind, for example, are such sources that are constantly being replenished naturally. Renewable energy sources are plenty and all around us. Fossil fuels, on the other hand, such as coal, oil, and gas, are non-renewable resources that take hundreds of millions of years to form. The, these fossil fuels, when burned to produce energy, causes harmful effects to the environment, toxic effects such as carbon dioxide. And transitioning from fossil fuels to renewable energy is the key to addressing the climate change crisis. Renewable energies are now cheaper in most countries and generate three times more jobs than fossil fuels. So this act researches and studies the feasibility and practicality of renewable energy systems at schools, and it will report to the state legislature. The act will require DOE, the Department of Education, to provide a list of high-priority areas in each school campus, in each county, that are in need of covered play areas so that we can protect the children from toxic effects of sunburn. And then the play areas that are the highest priority will be assessed to be recipients of renewable energy systems to upgrade the play area. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Okay, thank you. Is anyone else wishing to testify? Okay, members, questions? Okay, Representative Moore, call.
Thank you for the DOE. I like this bill actually because, you know, that in my district, it's very hot, and we're trying to see what we can do to get these areas covered, these play areas. The only problem I'm hearing about is that these facilities have to be built to a certain standard, so they may end up being gyms more than they're just covers over courts or playgrounds.
Yes, so the different schools have done different things depending on their situation, like Manoa Elementary built a very large canopy for outdoor play. They also have some playground equipment. Most of the playground equipment now is not what we think about with jungle gyms and sliding boards, right? It's actually a very complex device with some shade. Now, it's not, some don't cover the entire thing, so we just have to assess by school which would be conducive for that particular area by weather and...
Yeah, that's good to hear because I just wanted a basic cover, but now that you're going to put PV on top of a roof, right?
That's a possibility, not always conducive to the area.
You would want a very sturdy structure, right? But something that's not really closed off in like a gym area, but more where the wind can flow through.
Right, right. There are many schools that are doing the micro grids over their parking lots, which makes a lot of sense for that.
Yeah, okay.
So yeah, it really depends by school and the geographics of the topography.
Right, no, this makes me very excited because I don't like to see big gyms come up. I just want simple covers that you can use for energy and also to keep the children safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you very much. Members, any further questions? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to the next bill. House Bill 346-HD1 relating to electric vehicle charging infrastructure. First up is DCCA. Department of Accounting and General Services.
Standing on our written testimony, available for questions if you have any.
Okay, thank you very much. Good cover. Okay, next up is Department of Transportation on Zoom. Not present. Okay, next is Hawaii State Energy Office.
Good afternoon, Joe Calavita with the Hawaii State Energy Office. We stand on our written comments and support and are available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Climate Protectors Hawaii.
Ted Boland on behalf of Climate Protectors Hawaii. Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Climate Protectors are also in strong support of this bill, which would provide electric vehicle charging infrastructure for new state facilities and also some study of retrofit for existing ones. One of the benefits of this, expanding the ability of workers to charge electric vehicles at work, moves the peak more toward daytime when it's less expensive, so all ratepayers would benefit from that. But in general, this opens up more opportunity for electric vehicles for more people. So with the state leading by example, this is an excellent bill and I ask you to pass. Thank you very much on behalf of the Climate Protectors.
Thank you. Ulo Pono Initiative.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Micah Moni-Kanta here on behalf of the Ulo Pono Initiative. We'll stand on our written testimony and strong support of this bill. Just reiterating that EV ready is smart future-proofing. We have some stats in our testimony just highlighting some of the movement that was done in San Francisco at time of construction, for example, you know, having EV readiness included with some of the parking stalls were about $1,000 per parking stall. We did a study back in 2020 at Ulo Pono to really try to estimate how much a parking stall would actually cost here in Hawaii. And the cost that we estimate were at $42,000 to $57,000 a spot. So if you got to add another 1,000 bucks to have it EV ready, it's not too bad. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next is Blue Planet Foundation.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Jodi Robinson of Blue Planet Foundation will stand on our testimony and support. Mahalo.
Thank you. Hawaiian Electric on Zoom.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, and committee members, Jun Chi with Hawaiian Electric, and we stand on our written testimony and support. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Matthew Geier.
Hello, Chair, Matt Geier, Hawaii Environmental Change Agents. I'll just stand on support.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Please come forward.
Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Mike Arkaki with Department of Accounting and General Services. We stand by the testimony submitted by Arkakola and available for any questions.
Okay, thank you. Okay, is there anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Okay, seeing none, members, any questions? Okay, no questions. Moving on to the next measure, the House Bill 1415-HD1 relating to energy. First up is Climate Protectors Hawaii.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Ted Boland for Climate Protectors Hawaii. Thank you to the committee for hearing a number of these bills that relate to solar and electric vehicles, which are all great for the climate and we support them. This is one more that provides a revolving loan fund through the PUC for people who are not above the median income. So it's a good program, I support the bill. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Hawaii PUC.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name is Grace Rolf with the PUC, and we stand on our written testimony and can be available for questions. Thank you.
Okay, Matthew Geier.
Aloha again, Matt Geier, Hawaii Environmental Change Agents. We all know that electric vehicles are a little bit more expensive, so anything to help low-income families get an electric vehicle will help them out a lot because once you get an electric vehicle, the maintenance costs are less, the charging it is less, so you end up saving money in the long run. But it's harder for low-income families, Alice families, to actually get an electric vehicle. So anything we can do to help support them as we all, you know, participate in this electric vehicle transition, really important. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone wishing to testify on this measure, anybody else? Okay, seeing none, members, questions? Representative Ward.
Thank you, Jim.
The PUC, please. Do you have, how many loan programs do you guys have?
We currently don't administer any loan programs.
So this puts you in a new business, is my point.
It would, yes. And if you look at our testimony, that's why we've asked for slight modifications to the measure in order for us to work with administrators that are much more familiar with administering a loan program.
You mean subcontracted to a bank or to give it to a different department?
Subcontracting through somebody who's familiar with administering loans. I understand that the Hawaii Green Infrastructure Authority has administered loan programs like this for other agencies in the past, so that's one idea on the table. You know, we currently work with Hawaii Energy to administer other portions of this program, and I think, you know, we would want to work with them and other agencies as well to figure out who might be the best administrator for this under our direction as well.
My concern would also be the interest rates that you're going to charge, and I know that's something you don't know of, but unless there's an incentive that is reasonably low, having slightly below-market, given the high rates nowadays, is probably not much of an incentive. Thank you for your testimony. Thank you, Chair. Okay, thank you. Representative Kobayashi.
For PUC, a lot of specifics are in this bill, including that the loan shall bear no interest for the first five years, and then thereafter only 3%. But what do you do then if a person gets a loan, puts in a charging system, and then sells the property before five years? And in selling the property, reaps the benefit of having a charging system free of charge.
Yeah, thank you for that question. I think that, you know, in our testimony, we've offered a slight modification to the beginning of the measure that would allow us to design and administer the program. I think that's exactly the kind of question that we would want to address with that kind of flexibility to design the program. So, you know, I think Gwen previously was speaking about how other programs are more attached to the meter with disclosures to any new tenants or something like that. I think that's something we would want to consider with this measure as well.
The other problem here is that for housing developments, you have a requirement that the households make no more than 100% of the area median income, which would largely, I think, limit this to state public, I mean, government public housing. But even in government public housing, there are some to considerable households that have more than the area median income. And part of that is because some of the households are large households, you know, not the typical three-person households, but, and so their, their median income is high. So again, a lot of details in the bill which may make it real difficult to implement.
Yeah, we noted that as well, and I think one of the things that we've offered in our testimony is a little bit more flexibility in identifying, you know, who is a low and moderate-income homeowner, or are there other proxies we could use to identify who should qualify for this program? For example, families that may be qualifying for supplemental nutrition assistance programs or low-income home energy assistance. So our testimony, the suggested changes, allow the administrator and the PUC a little bit more flexibility to be able to address situations just as you've offered there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions? Okay, seeing none, we're going to be moving on to the next bill. House Bill 654... House Bill 654 H D two relating to buildings. First up is Hawaii State Energy Office.
Aloha Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Maria Toma, Hawaii State Energy Office. You have our testimony and support. You're available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Department of Accounting and General Services.
Good afternoon Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Richard Louis for our comptroller. We stand by our testimony and are available for any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Board of Water Supply.
Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name is Kathy Mitchell. I'm with the Board of Water Supply and we stand on our written testimony and support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Climate Protectors Hawaii.
Thank you Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Ted Boland on behalf of the Climate Protectors Hawaii. First, I want to thank Representative Cochran for introducing this bill. This is a bill that would save the state money in terms of both water and energy because it would collect data on building usage and enable them to figure out which buildings need to put in efficiency measures the most. So it's a, I think it's a smart bill and I strongly support it. Ask the committee to pass it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next is Kai Ulani Shin Sato.
Good afternoon Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Kai Ulani Shin Sato for Hawaiian Electric. We stand on our written testimony offering comments and suggested amendments on the bill. Thank you.
Is Michael Chang going to also testify?
Just me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Hawaii Energy.
Aloha Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Chester Carson for Hawaii Energy. We stand on our written testimony and support. Thank you.
Matthew Geier.
Standing supporting.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else wishing to testify? Okay, seeing none members, questions? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to the next bill. House Bill 1303 H D one relating to water conservation. First up is D L N R.
Aloha Chair, Vice Chair, committee members. Colm Mann, Deputy with the Water Commission. We stand on our written testimony and support and are here for questions if you have any.
Okay, thank you. Board of Water Supply.
Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Kathy Mitchell with the Board of Water Supply. We stand on our testimony in support of this measure, but we do recommend a minor amendment for clarification purposes on page three, line 13 to 15. So we're just adding the word irrigation. The Honolulu Board of Water Supply shall verify that the residential homeowner experienced a reduction in irrigation water use by at least 30%. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Seeing none, questions members? Okay, seeing none, moving on to House Bill 1212 H D one relating to water neutrality. First up is D L N R.
Hello again, the department stands on its written testimony and support. Model.
Thank you. Board of Water Supply.
Aloha Kathy Mitchell with the Board of Water Supply. We stand on our written testimony and support. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to testify? Seeing none, questions? Seeing none, we're going to move on to the next bill. House Bill 197 H D one relating to climate change mitigation. First is Department of Health, Environmental Health Administrator.
Good afternoon Chair, Vice Chair and Committee Members. My name is Mary Ann Rossio from the Department of Health. Department stands on its written testimony and support and we're here if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Climate Protectors Hawaii.
Thank you Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. I've testified a lot today. I think this is the most important climate bill of them all. Thank you for your patience with me. This is a refrigerant management program, which doesn't sound that exciting, but it turns out that the gases used for refrigeration include many that are really bad for the climate. So it's very important in terms of climate mitigation that we prevent leakage of these gases. Hydrofluorocarbons in particular. And so this would be a program to prevent those leakage. It wraps around a federal program that's been passed and it's a good addition to the program. California's done something similar and we could save a lot. So thank you for the opportunity to testify. Strong support for the bill.
Okay, thank you. Air Conditioning, Heating and Refrigeration Institute.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice Chair Bob Toyafuku, I represent the Air Conditioning, Heating and Refrigeration Institute. The written testimony was submitted by Mike Narazi. Unfortunately, he was not able to do the virtual testimony and asked me to do it on his behalf. The basic language that the institute is concerned about is on page nine, lines four to 10, which amends the state building code. Congress passed the Innovation and Manufacturing Act, which is phasing out the production and use of hydrofluorocarbons, the H C F, which are primarily used as refrigerants in air conditioners. The E P A is in the process of implementing the AIM Act and the use of new refrigerants. The issue that I'd like to point out is that many building codes do not currently allow the use of certain substitute refrigerants. And it's important to amend the state building code to allow these substitutions. Most important issue is time. New regulations proposed by the E P A will restrict the upstream supply of H C Fs beginning in 2024 and also prohibit the use of certain H C Fs. So the manufacturers need to know that they can sell products with the substitutes that's approved by the E P A. H B 197 H D one does not, it does amend the state's building code and does not make any other change to state law and I'll be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Paul Bernstein on Zoom.
Aloha Chair, Vice Chair, members of the Finance Committee. Paul Bernstein here for Hawaii Environmental Change Agents, Buildings, Decarbonization of Buildings Task Force. Stand on our written testimony and strong support of this bill. And as Ted Boland mentioned from Climate Protectors, H F Cs are a serious concern when it comes to climate change. So everything we can do to prevent the leakage of these dangerous chemicals is critically important. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Matthew Geier.
Aloha, this is the last bill I'll testify and bug you on today. Again, as Ted and Paul just mentioned, this is a really important bill and we can't wait for the E P A. We need to get this done quickly and it's really important, so I will support it. Thank you very much and thank you for hearing and supporting all these critically important environmental bills today.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to testify? Okay, members, questions? Representative Ward. Mr. Toyafuku please. Are you suggesting that the federal statute that is in the process of being executed makes this moot or not needed? Or what was your point?
The federal statute was signed in December 2020. And so it advises the, it wrecks actually, the Environmental Protection Agency, to start to phase out hydrofluorocarbons. And that, because it's the major chemical used in refrigerants, the institute wants to make sure that the state building codes do not prohibit them in any fashion from using the substitutions that are approved by the E P A. Because the E P A is starting to phase out H C Fs, which is a good thing. And the institute was in favor of it because this is a global warming situation and a climate change.
Would this bill obviate then the use of the substitutes, is the question? Does this bill say you can't use the substitutes that you said the federal E P A?
No, the bill basically says, I mean, that part of the bill, representative says that the building code cannot, in other words, the building codes would not prohibit them in any way from using substitutions approved by the E P A.
And this bill would do what to that statement?
It would do that. It would, it prohibits, it basically says regardless of what the building code says, as long as the E P A approves certain substitutions, that they can use it. Because some state building codes may not be updated in time to include the substitutions approved by the E P A.
So you're in agreement with the bill?
I'm sorry?
You're in agreement with the wording of the bill?
No, we're totally in favor of the bill.
Okay, good. Thank you. Thank you Chair. Thank you Mr. Chairman. Members, any further questions? Okay, we're going to move on to the next bill. House Bill 837 H D one. First up is D L N R.
Aloha Kakko. Heather McMillan, Division of Forestry and Wildlife with D L N R. We stand on our written testimony and support. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have the Office of Planning and Sustainable Development. Nope, not here. Okay, next we have the Envision Action Committee of Hawaii. Teach Hawaii John Young on Zoom.
Yes, good afternoon Chair, Vice Chair and Committee Members. My name is John Young and I'm one of the founders of the Envision Action Committee of Hawaii. We stand on our written testimony which offer comments. Basically, we want to introduce Envision to the committee. Envision is a green rating system for infrastructure as opposed to LEED, which is mainly for buildings. It was developed by the Institute for Sustainable Infrastructure. Now, just like LEED, a project can receive an Envision award, but that's something to be considered. What I'm really recommending for this bill is that Envision be required to use first and foremost as a measuring tool of a project's sustainability and resilience. Envision has the tools that will allow projects to be measured in that way. It would be an excellent way to evaluate sustainable design concepts for public infrastructures in a uniform and quantitative way. About a year ago, the Board of Water actually had a project where they required the contractor to utilize this method propagated by the Institute for Sustainable Infrastructure when scoring the project's sustainability with the Envision criteria. I recommend that the bill include use of Envision. Thank you for letting me share on Envision and for testifying. I will be available for questions.
Thank you, John. Next up, we have the Hawaii Reef and Ocean Coalition and Climate Protectors Hawaii. Ted Boland.
Thank you Vice Chair, members of the committee. Ted Boland on behalf of both the Hawaii Reef and Ocean Coalition and the Climate Protectors Hawaii. This bill is another one that would save the state money because it would enable us to use, to plan to use vegetation and trees to reduce runoff of wastewater and save energy and air conditioning costs with shading. So it's a good idea. It's just incorporating some natural solutions into your planning process through the Office of Planning. I support the bill on behalf of the Climate Protectors Hawaii and thank you for the opportunity to testify on so many bills.
Thanks Ted. Anyone else wishing to testify on H B 837? Okay, seeing none committee members, any questions? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to our next bill on the agenda, H B 1200 H D one relating to the Conservation and Resources Enforcement Program. First up, we have D L N R.
Good afternoon Vice Chair and members of the committee. Jason Redulla, Do Care Chief, on behalf of the department. Will stand on our written testimony and support of this measure and happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you Jason. We have other supportive testimony, but no one has indicated they are going to be here to testify. So anyone else wanting to testify on H B 1200? Seeing none committee, any questions? Representative Ward.
Mr. Redulla, Jason, it says in the bill you've got four million acres you're supposed to watch over. This drone program is going to help you do that. Are you going to save money if this program gets off the ground? If so, how much?
You know, that's an excellent question Representative Ward. I think with the drone program, this will definitely help us save money in that in many areas where we'll have to fly in by helicopter at a rate of about a thousand dollars an hour airtime. If we do it with a drone, there'll be significant savings that will allow us not, not having the need to hire a helicopter service for us to access these areas.
Do you have any drones now?
No, we don't.
How much will they cost?
You know, we're looking right now at some of the drones that other programs, other law enforcement agencies have. It kind of depends on the exact type of aircraft, but they run somewhere between 5,000 to 10,000 dollars each.
Who's the leading drone proponent in the state? Is it H P D or another department?
You know, I'm not sure if there is such a proponent. We do know that some of the county police departments and fire departments use this technology.
None of the drones you're talking about are made in Iran or China, right?
To be honest with you, I'm not sure.
That's rhetorical. Thank you. Thank you Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move to our next bill on the agenda, H B 660 H D one. This is relating to the issuance of a SPUR for nonprofit corporations that provide healthcare facilities to the general public. First up to testify, we have Hawaii Pacific Health. Mike Robinson.
Good afternoon Chair, Vice Chair and members of the committee. This is Mike Robinson, Rick White Pacific Health. I want to thank the committee for scheduling this bill today. The special purpose revenue bond, H B 660, is essential for our 15-year master plan to redevelop Strab Medical Center. Again, this is debt that Hawaii Pacific Health will be issuing. It has no impact upon the state's borrowing capacity. However, it is a certification that we will need in order for us to get preferred interest rates on the debt that we'll be issuing for this project. As you know, Strab Medical Center has not had any significant renovation since 1970 and this will help allow us to develop our Phase One of our multi-phase master plan of Strab, which the first phase will include parking and this issue will also help us do planning and design work for Phase Two, which will be our hospital tower. We do not intend to add any more beds. This project is really to help us manage population health and as much as possible reduce inpatient admissions as most of the project will be dedicated to developing outpatient care and different modalities. So I thank this committee for considering this and if you have any questions, I will be available. Thank you.
Thank you very much Mike. Anyone else wishing to testify on H B 660? Okay, seeing none committee members, any questions? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move to our next bill on the agenda, H B 159 H D one relating to liquor licenses. First up to testify, we have Maui Brewing Company. Garrett Marrero on Zoom. Not present? Okay, moving to the next, we have Lonikai Brewing Company. Steve Homchow.
Yeah, hi Chair, Vice Chair and members of the committee. Thanks for your time. Anything to simplify the liquor licensing application is more than welcome. Notary is definitely not an essential component considering the, all the steps that are along the way. So I'll just leave it real simple at that. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you Steve. Anyone else wanting to testify on H B 159? Okay, seeing none committee members, any questions? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move to our next bill on the agenda, H B 1458 H D one. This is also relating to the liquor license. First up to testify, we'll have Lonikai Brewing Company, Steve Homchow.
Hi Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Thanks again for the opportunity to testify. This bill is great. What this bill does is allows manufacturers to increase their capacity. You may or may not know that alcohol producers have a state-based capacity that we're allowed to produce at. So by increasing this capacity allows us to grow our maiden Hawaii-based businesses, allows us to focus on exporting maiden Hawaii products that can export into other markets, allows us to hire more individuals at our Hawaii facilities and obviously pay more taxes along the way. I'm here for any questions and thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you Steve. Anyone else wishing to testify on H B 1458? Okay, seeing none committee members, any questions? Yes, Representative Ward.
Thank you Chair. Steve, are you still there?
Yes, yes. Yes, yes, I am.
Steve, thank you for your testimony, which sounds so logical. My question is, why in the beginning did we limit the amount you guys could produce? Is this a bit of a turf war that began this? Or we're now freeing you up to be more competitive, which seems logical in a market-based economy? What's historically happened that a bill like this has to be initiated?
Well, there's multiple different licensing classes that are authorized under HRS. You can be a strict manufacturer. You can be a brew pub. And this one is specifically related to a Class 18. Class 18 is a relatively newer license. It's probably one of the newer ones, but it allows diversity within production. So, for example, I'm also a Class 18, and I can produce wine or spirits or beer. And so initially, I believe it was just that they wanted to see caps placed on production to watch how it goes and to make sure all the steps were in place. I don't understand why there would be a logical reason why that we would want to have caps in place on production. You know, if you look at beer, for example, 95% of what we sell in the state of Hawaii is actually imported, and only 5% is produced locally. Whereas if you look at the average other states, you're looking at somewhere between 13% and 18% is produced locally and the rest is imported. So Hawaii's kind of behind the ball on this one. So I believe it was just kind of as a new license and it was being watched along the way, and there's only a few companies that are looking to push those cap limits. I hope that somewhat addressed your question.
It does, but what, for example, if we had no caps at all? What would this do to you or what would it do to the industry? If we just said, hey, whatever you can produce and whatever you can sell, you can produce. What would it do? Or would it make no difference?
It would be fantastic. It would allow us to stop coming to you guys every few years to ask for a cap increase. And it would just allow companies to continue to grow, and as our companies grow, continue to pay taxes. So, you know, ultimately, a no cap would really be the most logical along the way. And I'm not too sure why the cap would be in place otherwise. But, you know, if we could amend it to a no cap, the entire industry would be supportive of that because it allows us to continue to grow without restrictions.
So you could push Budweiser and Coors back? No, that's a rhetorical question.
Well, if we could one day compete at those levels, we would happily obviously do that. And that would be a great flag in the sand in Hawaii for Hawaii-based producers. But at this time, I think, you know, all local guys are just really focused on, especially on the back of the pandemic, just making sure that our businesses are healthy and growing. And, you know, technically, we're in the manufacturing sector, which is challenging due to shipping costs and energy costs and things like that. So we're just focused on growing our businesses right now.
But they'll go the way of primo. That's a historical footnote only. Thank you, Chair. Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Any other questions, committee? Okay, seeing none, we're going to go to our next bill, HB 1029, HD1. This is relating to the use of electronic filing by the PUC. First up, we have DCCA, Division of Consumer Advocacy.
Hello again, Dean Ishin, with the Department of Commerce and Consumer Affairs. You have our written testimony in support. Stand on it. Available for questions if any. Thank you.
Thank you, Dean. Next up, we have the PUC.
Good afternoon, Chair Yamashita, Vice Chair Kizagawa and members of the committee. I'm Jodi Andochai of the Public Utilities Commission. You have our testimony. We stand in strong support, and we're available for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Jodi. Next up, we have Life of the Land, Henry Curtis on Zoom. Okay, not present. Anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Okay, seeing none, committee members, any questions? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move to our next bill, HB 1261. This is relating to special purpose digital currency licensure. First up, we have DCCA, Iris Takeda.
Hello, Chair Yamashita and members of the committee. My name is Iris Takeda. I'm the Commissioner for the Division of Financial Institutions, Department of Commerce and Consumer Affairs. So we are in strong support of this bill. As you know, digital currency has grown in popularity, and this bill would provide the structure for licensing, supervising and examining digital currency companies. I'm sure you folks have also heard of the recent failures of the digital currency companies like Block Five, Three Arrows, Capital, Voyager, Celsius, FTX, just to name a few. And that has really illustrated the volatility of these units and how quickly a company can fail. I would say that even if this bill had passed last year, you know, folks who had used those companies, you know, probably would still be kind of in the same boat. But at least we would have had some leverage in working with the companies to get some return for those citizens that use these companies. As it stands right now, it's all unlicensed activity, and so folks have lost a lot of money. So we requested this bill continue to move through the process, and we are still meeting with the industry to kind of strengthen this bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Iris. Next up is HTDC, Len Higashi.
Good afternoon. Ray Gomez for HTDC, testifying on behalf of Len Higashi. We stand on our written testimony in support.
Thank you, Ray. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Okay, seeing none, committee members, any questions? Representative Ward.
Please, Dean Ishin. I forgot the department that you're, yes, yours, the digital currency expert. What's the state of the art of digital currency in Hawaii? Did FTX hit hard against where we are? And what's the sort of the state of the state, if you will, of digital currency? Can you go and buy a Mercedes with digital currency? Is it being traded, used? Just sort of an update, if you will, to see how this bill fits into what's on the ground?
So thanks for that question. So in terms of FTX, I don't really know how much, how many citizens were affected. We do know for some of the other companies, there are up to 14,000 citizens that were affected by some of the other companies from the fallout.
This nationwide or Hawaii?
Hawaii.
14,000?
Yes.
Okay, so digital currency is alive and well?
It is. We probably have about 109,000 current participants in our digital currency innovation lab right now.
And what can you buy and sell with digital currency that people will know about or that we should know about?
You can buy a house. You can buy cars. You know, a lot of people use it for investment. There are a number of different things it can be used for.
And this bill will bring us into, in your department, more regulatory, more monitoring control?
Well, this would be the only license of its kind nationwide. Several other states have introduced the exact same bill that's being contemplated here. So this is a bill that's really made for the industry. We work with the industry to kind of craft a bill or a regulatory structure that kind of manages what they do.
And it's in other states, you said, or this is the first of the kind?
Hawaii would be the first state.
First of the kind. Good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Committee, any other questions? Okay, seeing none, we're going to go to the last bill on this agenda, HB 525, relating to the Uniform Commercial Code. First up to testify on Zoom, we have the Commission to Promote Uniform Legislation.
Hi, good afternoon, Chair Yamashita, Vice Chair Kizagawa and committee members. Peter Hamasaki appearing on behalf of the Commission to Promote Uniform Legislation. We're in strong support of HB 525, which adopts the 2022 amendments to the Uniform Commercial Code, and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. There's no one else wanting to testify on this measure on our list, but is there anyone here wanting to testify? Okay, seeing none, committee members, any questions? Okay, seeing none, we are going to recess for decision-making.
Okay, we reconvene the committee on finance for decision-making on our second agenda. First up is House Bill 193, HD1, relating to energy efficiency portfolio standards. Recommendation is to pass as is. Discussion, Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 193, HD1, as is. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye. Representative Ayu?
Aye.
Representative Chun?
Aye.
Representative Cochran?
Aye.
Representative Garrett?
Aye.
Representative Kahaloa?
Aye.
Representative Keela?
Aye.
Representative Kobayashi?
Aye.
Representative Lamasau?
Aye.
Representative Morikawa?
Aye.
Representative Nishimoto is excused. Representative Poipoi?
Aye.
Representative Takinouchi?
Aye.
Representative Alcos?
Aye.
Representative Ward?
Aye.
Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you. House Bill 1505, HD1, as is. Discussion, Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 1505, HD1, as is, noting the excused absence of Representative Nishimoto, who will be marked excused for the rest of this agenda. Are there any reservations? Any knows. Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, House Bill 1506, HD1, as is. Discussion, Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 1506, HD1, as is. Are there any reservations? Any knows. Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, House Bill 949, HD2, as is. Discussion, Vice Chair.
Chair, comment on that?
Please.
As indicated earlier, in one of the other loan programs, they said it's free for the first year and 3% interest, whereas this bill is at 5-point-something interest. If we're going to incentivize them, it would be nice if we could consider a lower interest rate if you were going to buy into this program.
Okay.
Thank you.
We, something that we'll talk it over with subject matter.
Okay, thank you.
For now, as is. Just any further discussion? Okay, Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 949, HD2, as is. Are there any reservations? Any knows. Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, moving on to, okay, House Bill 896, HD1, as is. Discussion, Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 896, HD1, as is. Are there any reservations? Any knows. Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, House Bill 346, HD1. Members, we're going to pass this as in HD2, taking the amendments from the Hawaii Energy Office. This, we have prior concurrence from the subject matter chair. Any discussion? Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 346, HD1, with amendments. Are there any reservations? Any knows. Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you. House Bill 1415, HD1, as is. Discussion, Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 1415, HD1, as is. Are there any reservations? Any knows. Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you. House Bill 654, HD2, as is. Discussion, Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 654, HD2, Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 654 HD2 as is. Are there any reservations? Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 654 HD2 as is. Are there any reservations? Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 654 HD2 as is. Are there any reservations? Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 654 HD2 as is. Are there any reservations? Any noes. Chair, your recommendation is adopted. Any noes. Chair, your recommendation is adopted. Any noes. Chair, your recommendation is adopted. Any noes. Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you. House Bill 1303 HD1 as is, oh, yeah, as is. Any discussion? Representative Kobayashi. Okay, thank you. House Bill 1303 HD1 as is, oh, yeah, as is. Any discussion? Representative Kobayashi. Okay, thank you. House Bill 1303 HD1 as is, oh, yeah, as is. Any discussion? Representative Kobayashi. Okay, thank you. House Bill 1303 HD1 as is, yeah, as is. Any discussion? Representative Kobayashi.
I'm WR on this. I'm not sure we should give money to city and county for a water supply issue. I'm WR on this. I'm not sure we should give money to city and county for a water supply issue. I'm WR on this. I'm not sure we should give money to city and county for a water supply issue. I'm WR on this. I'm not sure we should give money to city and county for a water supply issue. And then it provide, part of this bill is good in that it suggests incentives And then it provide, part of this bill is good in that it suggests incentives And then it provide, part of this bill is good in that it suggests incentives And then it provide, part of this bill is good in that it suggests incentives for landscaping, et cetera, but there's no way of measuring this. for landscaping, et cetera, but there's no way of measuring this. for landscaping, et cetera, but there's no way of measuring this. for landscaping, et cetera, but there's no way of measuring this. They ask for a 30% target, but unless you have a separate water meter for your irrigation and landscaping, They ask for a 30% target, but unless you have a separate water meter for your irrigation and landscaping, They ask for a 30% target, but unless you have a separate water meter for your irrigation and landscaping, They ask for a 30% target, but unless you have a separate water meter for your irrigation and landscaping, you can't measure anything. So, needs work. Okay, thank you. you can't measure anything. So, needs work. Okay, thank you. you can't measure anything. So, needs work. Okay, thank you. you can't measure anything. So, needs work. Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Vice Chair. Any further discussion? Vice Chair. Any further discussion? Vice Chair. Any further discussion? Vice Chair.
Recommend, okay, recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 1303 HD1 as is, Recommend, okay, recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 1303 HD1 as is, Recommend, okay, recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 1303 HD1 as is, Recommend, okay, recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 1303 HD1 as is, noting the reservations of Representative Kobayashi. Are there any additional reservations? noting the reservations of Representative Kobayashi. Are there any additional reservations? noting the reservations of Representative Kobayashi. Are there any additional reservations? noting the reservations of Representative Kobayashi. Are there any additional reservations? Any noes. Chair, your recommendation is adopted. Any noes. Chair, your recommendation is adopted. Any noes. Chair, your recommendation is adopted. Any noes. Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. House Bill 1212 HD1 as is. Discussion. Vice Chair. Thank you. House Bill 1212 HD1 as is. Discussion. Vice Chair. Thank you. House Bill 1212 HD1 as is. Discussion. Vice Chair. Thank you. House Bill 1212 HD1 as is. Discussion. Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 1212 HD1 as is. Are there any reservations? Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 1212 HD1 as is. Are there any reservations? Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 1212 HD1 as is. Are there any reservations? Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 1212 HD1 as is. Are there any reservations? Any noes. Chair, your recommendation is adopted. Any noes. Chair, your recommendation is adopted. Any noes. Chair, your recommendation is adopted. Any noes. Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, House Bill 197 HD1 as is. Discussion. Vice Chair. Okay, House Bill 197 HD1 as is. Discussion. Vice Chair. Okay, House Bill 197 HD1 as is. Discussion. Vice Chair. Okay, House Bill 197 HD1 as is. Discussion. Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 197 HD1 as is. Are there any reservations? Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 197 HD1 as is. Are there any reservations? Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 197 HD1 as is. Are there any reservations? Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 197 HD1 as is. Are there any reservations? Any noes. Chair, your recommendation is adopted. Any noes. Chair, your recommendation is adopted. Any noes. Chair, your recommendation is adopted. Any noes. Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, House Bill 837 HD1 as is. Discussion. Vice Chair. Okay, House Bill 837 HD1 as is. Discussion. Vice Chair. Okay, House Bill 837 HD1 as is. Discussion. Vice Chair. Okay, House Bill 837 HD1 as is. Discussion. Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 837 HD1 as is. Are there any reservations? Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 837 HD1 as is. Are there any reservations? Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 837 HD1 as is. Are there any reservations? Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 837 HD1 as is. Are there any reservations? Any noes. Chair, your recommendation is adopted. Any noes. Chair, your recommendation is adopted. Any noes. Chair, your recommendation is adopted. Any noes. Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. House Bill 1200 HD1 as is. Discussion. Vice Chair. Thank you. House Bill 1200 HD1 as is. Discussion. Vice Chair. Thank you. House Bill 1200 HD1 as is. Discussion. Vice Chair. Thank you. House Bill 1200 HD1 as is. Discussion. Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 1200 HD1 as is. Are there any reservations? Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 1200 HD1 as is. Are there any reservations? Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 1200 HD1 as is. Are there any reservations? Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 1200 HD1 as is. Are there any reservations? Any noes. Chair, your recommendation is adopted. Any noes. Chair, your recommendation is adopted. Any noes. Chair, your recommendation is adopted. Any noes. Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, House Bill 660 HD1 as is. Discussion. Vice Chair. Okay, House Bill 660 HD1 as is. Discussion. Vice Chair. Okay, House Bill 660 HD1 as is. Discussion. Vice Chair. Okay, House Bill 660 HD1 as is. Discussion. Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 660 HD1 as is. Are there any reservations? Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 660 HD1 as is. Are there any reservations? Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 660 HD1 as is. Are there any reservations? Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 660 HD1 as is. Are there any reservations? Any noes. Chair, your recommendation is adopted. Any noes. Chair, your recommendation is adopted. Any noes. Chair, your recommendation is adopted. Any noes. Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you. House Bill 159 HD1 as is. Discussion. Vice Chair. Okay, thank you. House Bill 159 HD1 as is. Discussion. Vice Chair. Okay, thank you. House Bill 159 HD1 as is. Discussion. Vice Chair. Okay, thank you. House Bill 159 HD1 as is. Discussion. Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 159 HD1 as is. Are there any reservations? Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 159 HD1 as is. Are there any reservations? Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 159 HD1 as is. Are there any reservations? Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 159 HD1 as is. Are there any reservations? Any noes. Chair, your recommendation is adopted. Any noes. Chair, your recommendation is adopted. Any noes. Chair, your recommendation is adopted. Any noes. Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, House Bill 1458 HD1 as is. Discussion. Representative Ward. Okay, House Bill 1458 HD1 as is. Discussion. Representative Ward. Okay, House Bill 1458 HD1 as is. Discussion. Representative Ward. Okay, House Bill 1458 HD1 as is. Discussion. Representative Ward.
Chair, if we could give our local beer manufacturers a break, lifting these restrictions on how much they can produce. Chair, if we could give our local beer manufacturers a break, lifting these restrictions on how much they can produce. Chair, if we could give our local beer manufacturers a break, lifting these restrictions on how much they can produce. Chair, if we could give our local beer manufacturers a break, lifting these restrictions on how much they can produce. As they said, 90% of all the beer comes in from the mainland. As they said, 90% of all the beer comes in from the mainland. As they said, 90% of all the beer comes in from the mainland. As they said, 90% of all the beer comes in from the mainland. They're small and we're putting kind of a governor on how much they can produce versus let the market decide. They're small and we're putting kind of a governor on how much they can produce versus let the market decide. They're small and we're putting kind of a governor on how much they can produce versus let the market decide. They're small and we're putting kind of a governor on how much they can produce versus let the market decide. If we could go more local, why have a limitation on what they can do? If we could go more local, why have a limitation on what they can do? If we could go more local, why have a limitation on what they can do? If we could go more local, why have a limitation on what they can do?
Yeah, that's a good point. We'll bring it up with subject matter. Yeah, that's a good point. We'll bring it up with subject matter. Yeah, that's a good point. We'll bring it up with subject matter. Yeah, that's a good point. We'll bring it up with subject matter.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
And I'm not a beer drinker necessarily either. And I'm not a beer drinker necessarily either. And I'm not a beer drinker necessarily either. And I'm not a beer drinker necessarily either.
Thank you. Okay, any further discussion? As is, Vice Chair. Thank you. Okay, any further discussion? As is, Vice Chair. Thank you. Okay, any further discussion? As is, Vice Chair. Thank you. Okay, any further discussion? As is, Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 1458 HD1 as is. Are there any reservations? Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 1458 HD1 as is. Are there any reservations? Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 1458 HD1 as is. Are there any reservations? Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 1458 HD1 as is. Are there any reservations? Any noes. Chair, your recommendation is adopted. Any noes. Chair, your recommendation is adopted. Any noes. Chair, your recommendation is adopted. Any noes. Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you. House Bill 1029 HD1. Members, we're going to defer this. Okay, thank you. House Bill 1029 HD1. Members, we're going to defer this. Okay, thank you. House Bill 1029 HD1. Members, we're going to defer this. Okay, thank you. House Bill 1029 HD1. Members, we're going to defer this. The Senate bill in CPN just passed out, so we're going to use that as the vehicle. The Senate bill in CPN just passed out, so we're going to use that as the vehicle. The Senate bill in CPN just passed out, so we're going to use that as the vehicle. The Senate bill in CPN just passed out, so we're going to use that as the vehicle. Moving on to the next bill, House Bill 1261 HD1. Moving on to the next bill, House Bill 1261 HD1. Moving on to the next bill, House Bill 1261 HD1. Moving on to the next bill, House Bill 1261 HD1. As, we're going to move this out as a HD2, blanking out the appropriation, As, we're going to move this out as a HD2, blanking out the appropriation, As, we're going to move this out as a HD2, blanking out the appropriation, As, we're going to move this out as a HD2, blanking out the appropriation, putting a defective date of June 30th, 2023, and tech. Any discussion? Vice Chair. putting a defective date of June 30th, 2023, and tech. Any discussion? Vice Chair. putting a defective date of June 30th, 2023, and tech. Any discussion? Vice Chair. putting a defective date of June 30th, 2023, and tech. Any discussion? Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 1261 HD1 with amendments. Are there any reservations? Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 1261 HD1 with amendments. Are there any reservations? Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 1261 HD1 with amendments. Are there any reservations? Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 1261 HD1 with amendments. Are there any reservations? Any noes. Chair, your recommendation is adopted. Any noes. Chair, your recommendation is adopted. Any noes. Chair, your recommendation is adopted. Any noes. Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, House Bill 525 HD2 as is. Discussion. Vice Chair. Okay, House Bill 525 HD2 as is. Discussion. Vice Chair. Okay, House Bill 525 HD2 as is. Discussion. Vice Chair. Okay, House Bill 525 HD2 as is. Discussion. Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 525 HD2 as is. Are there any reservations? Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 525 HD2 as is. Are there any reservations? Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 525 HD2 as is. Are there any reservations? Recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 525 HD2 as is. Are there any reservations? Any noes. Chair, your recommendation is adopted. Any noes. Chair, your recommendation is adopted. Any noes. Chair, your recommendation is adopted. Any noes. Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you, members. We're going to adjourn this hearing and move on to the next one in a couple minutes. Adjourn. Okay, thank you, members. We're going to adjourn this hearing and move on to the next one in a couple minutes. Adjourn. Okay, thank you, members. We're going to adjourn this hearing and move on to the next one in a couple minutes. Adjourn. Okay, thank you, members. We're going to adjourn this hearing and move on to the next one in a couple minutes. Adjourn.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to House Bill 161 H D one relating to collective bargaining. First up is DeHir.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name is Brenna Hashimoto. I'm the chief negotiator and will stand on our written testimony in opposition to this bill and available for any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up is H S T A.
Laverne Moore, speaking on behalf of O S A Truwe, Junior President of the Hawaii State Teachers Association. The H S T stands on our written testimony. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. H G E A.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Steve Tevis for H G E A. We stand in strong support of this measure and here to answer any questions.
Thank you. B N F wanted to testify on this measure? No? Okay, thank you. Okay, is there anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Okay, seeing none. Questions, members? Okay, no questions. Maybe don't eat dinner tonight. House Bill 1205 H D one relating to collective bargaining. First up is, first up is, let's see, U H P A. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Sarah Beamer for Christian Fern with U H P A. We stand on our written testimony in strong support. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. H G E A.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Nui Sebastian with H G E A. We stand in support of our written testimony. Here for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is Julie Reyes Oda on Zoom.
Hi, good afternoon, Chair Yamashita, Vice Chair Kitagawa, members of the House Finance Committee. My name is Julie Reyes Oda, resident of Eva Beach, teacher at Nanakuli High and Intermediate, former H S T leader president and former H S T A member. I'm providing comments on H B 1205 regarding grievance representation for public employees who do not pay dues or dues equivalent. I know this is long, but I ask that I'm allowed to finish my testimony. This bill is trying to call someone like me a free rider. Free riders are defined as someone who doesn't pay or underpays but continues to consume communal resources. I'm a public sector worker, but I am not a union member. I am riding this system for free against my will because the union has terminated my membership, as is allowed by the Nonprofit Act when unions are allowed to create their own bylaws subject to no other approval or supervision by this or any other body outside of themselves. Right now, anyone could call me a free rider, but it's like saying I won't pay for a ticket while simultaneously refusing to let me on the bus. This bill is saying that I will not have access to any representation and I will not be given a choice by law unless I give H S T A money with no voice or access as to how or why they spend it. This does not sound like a law that should pass in the state of Hawaii. As long as public unions can pick and choose who they allow to participate in the union, it is unfair to employees to allow their unions to deny representation. This is a one-sided relationship. Right now, the H S T A bylaws, Article Four, Section Six, says that the H S T A Board of Directors may review applications for membership and reject any applicant for good cause, including failure to meet eligibility requirements or disqualification under the N E A or corporations bylaws, or members terminated as a bargaining unit employee or subject to disciplinary action and expelled under Article Fifteen of the bylaws. The Board of Directors are made up of less than thirty people, thirty out of over thirteen thousand, whom, most of whom did not face any opposition in elections. Even the current president, vice president, and secretary treasurer ran unopposed. Around twenty percent voted in the last elections and even less pay attention to the actions of the union outside of negotiations. This is not representative of working people and safeguards need to be put in place to protect them against bad actors. This bill revolves around money. Let's call it what it is. Public unions should not have to expend any money on non-union paying public sector workers because it costs them too much. I challenge that argument with the cost of grievance representation not being the largest expense, well, at least not for H S T A. I know from my experience with H S T A that they spend more money on things that are not on grievance representation. Remember, public unions can deny membership to people who want to participate. I had my membership terminated when one of the things that I raised a question about was management's violations of policies and procedures when dealing with our union staff. H S T A has had numerous complaints against us by our own union employees with the N L R B, the National Labor Relations Board. It's public, anyone can look it up. I imagine we spent thousands of dollars on attorney fees defending the union against our own employees for years. The members are given no notice about these things and have no choice but to pay for in-app management decisions. There was a time that H S T A was being charged with the same offenses we said our employer was doing to us, like bad faith bargaining and making unilateral changes. This law wants to give more power to a corporation. At the end of the day, H S T A is a corporation. We can drain resources with stupid business management mistakes like these. If this bill is on its way to being passed, I'd like to make a recommendation. To add to this bill, empower the Hawaii Labor Relations Board, the H L R B, to have investigative rights like the N L R B, the national. The H L R B stated in the matter of Murphy v. H S T A in 2022 that the board, unlike the N L R B or other boards, does not perform investigations where prohibited practices cases are filed. This law is trying to protect the wrong party here. I can only speak about H S T A, but as long as they are covered by this bill, it gives them the ability to further abuse their powers because they know that no one can investigate them. If this bill is to pass, remove H S T A as a covered union or clarify that public sector unions in the state of Hawaii should not exclude anyone from being a member in the union. I don't know about other unions, but I know this one, and H S T A should be carved out of any additional rights they can abuse. I support workers and organized labor. What I don't support is what H S T A does to keep their members in line. Kicking out members should not be an option if government sector workers are required to pay for representation. Furthermore, I would like to bring up some questions I have with this bill. What if the grievable issues came about during the time of membership and the person isn't a member anymore? Is the issue covered or is the person covered? There'd be a dispute on coverage for the event. Can the union stop pursuing a grievance for a terminated employee? Because the employer has terminated, completed the termination, and that person would not be a public sector employee, therefore terminating the union relationship. Again, is the issue a person covered? How are agency fees determined? Who determines the fees? A non-member has no say, so how is that fair? And what services are the non-member who pays entitled to and who decides that? Could this be likened to an insurance policy where I get nothing unless there's a covered event? And is this even constitutional to terminate a public sector worker when their bargaining unit is assigned by law? This bill thinks of two options: workers who want to be a member and those who choose not to be a member. There's a third category: workers who are either not let into a union or are kicked out. This bill does not address the third category. Thank you so much for listening to my testimony.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Okay, seeing none. Members, questions? Representative Morikawa.
I guess this might be for H G A, since I'm more familiar with H G A. Is there a reasonable cost of representation?
For non-members or just for members in general?
For all members as a whole.
Yes, so currently it's just their monthly dues, which is point zero eight percent of their base paycheck. For non-members, non-members do not pay dues.
But you have associate members.
Correct. We do have associate members. Those are members that are not included in any H G A bargaining unit. It could be retiree members or private sector employed members.
And Ash may only represent excluded, but they all pay dues.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? Okay, Representative Kobayashi.
For H G A, Representative Morikawa asked, is there a way of figuring out reasonable costs of representation? That's what the bill says. People who decline to pay reasonable costs of the representation.
So I would, you know, I'm not in a position to state the cost, but yes, I would assume there is a way to have reasonable costs if this measure was to pass and we were to implement something of this essence.
You've got to figure that out because without figuring that out, at least some of the bill is irrelevant.
Okay, so.
I think. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? Okay, seeing none. Members, we're moving on to House Bill 163 H D one relating to collective bargaining. First up is Budget and Finance.
Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Sabrina Nasir, Deputy Director for Department of Budget and Finance, and we stand on our written testimony, which offers comments. We're available to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. DeHir.
Committee members, this is, we're in opposition to this measure and will stand on our written testimony and be available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, next, Sidney County of Honolulu, Department of Human Resources.
Chair Yamashita, Vice Chair Kitagawa, members of the committee. I'm Nola Miyazaki, Director of the Department of Human Resources, Sidney County of Honolulu. We stand in opposition, we stand on our written testimony in opposition and are available to answer questions. Thank you.
Thank you. H G E A.
Good afternoon again, Chair, Vice Chair, members. Steve Tevis for H G A. We stand in support of the measure and here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to testify? Seeing none. Members, questions? Okay, we're going to move on to the next bill. House Bill 334 H D one relating to the employment union health benefit trust fund contributions. Okay, first up is B N F.
Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Sabrina Nasir, Deputy Director of Department of Budget and Finance. We stand on our testimony in opposition of this bill. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. DeHir.
Hi, Brenna Hashimoto again. We're providing comments related to this measure. We feel like the collective bargaining process provides a fair and reasonable process to determine the costs and are concerned about this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. H G E A.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Steve Tevis for H G A. We stand in strong support of this measure and here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Okay, seeing none. Questions, members? Representative Kobayashi.
For collective bargaining, unions in Hawaii have often categorized the scope of collective bargaining as being outside of the purview of the legislature. So this bill seems to move in the opposite direction. Isn't this a matter for collective bargaining?
Yes, it should be. This bill seeks to set a set percentage, a fixed percentage of the healthcare costs to mandate it. So right now, the dollar contribution that the employer makes to each plan is negotiable. So we would prefer that it continue to be negotiable.
But you could, through collective bargaining, fix a percentage.
We could, but that, again, would be subject to negotiation versus statutorily mandated.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Any further questions? Okay, we're going to move on to House Bill 164 relating to H D one relating to professional license fee renewals. First up is Department of Education.
Good afternoon, Chair Yamashita, Vice Chair Kitagawa, and members of the committee. Sean Bacon, Assistant Superintendent for the Office of Talent Management, testifying on behalf of the department. The department stands on its written testimony, offering comments on this measure, and will be available for any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. DeHir.
Okay, DeHir, actually, the Office of Collective Bargaining is opposed to this measure as well for the same reason that this is a matter that's more appropriate as a collective bargaining negotiable item. Thank you.
Thank you very much. H G A.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Steve Tevis for H G A. We stand in strong support. However, as was just mentioned by collective bargaining, we've tried to bring this up during negotiations and we're told it was outside of collective bargaining. That's why we're coming to the legislature at this time. So I just want to make that point, that this has come up before in collective bargaining and we're told it's not a bargaining issue. So we're coming here for the legislature to address it. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Okay, questions? Okay, moving on, House Bill 1409 H D two relating to employee benefits. First up is Department of Labor and Industrial Relations.
Thank you, Chair. Jibutai for D L I R. We stand on our testimony in support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Hawaii Children's Action Network speaks. Oh, sorry, well, not here. Next one is Todd Taniguchi on Zoom. Not present. Okay, is there anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Seeing none. Questions? Okay, moving on to the next bill, House Bill 491 H D two relating to leave grant program. First up is Department of Labor and Industrial Relations.
Aloha, Chair. We stand on our testimony in opposition. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next is Chamber of Commerce. Okay, is there anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Seeing none. Questions, members? Seeing none, we're going to move on to House Bill 57 H D one relating to workers' compensation. First up is Department of Labor.
Thank you, Chair. We stand on our testimony in support.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to testify? Okay, seeing none. Members, questions? Okay, moving on to the next bill, House Bill 165 H D one relating to internal complaint procedures. H G A.
Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Nui Sebastian with H G E A. We stand in support of this measure. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. No one else signed up to testify on this measure? Members, questions? Okay, we're going to move on to the next bill, House Bill 168 H D two relating to Public Works, Department of Labor.
Aloha, Chair. We stand on our testimony in support.
Okay, thank you very much. Next is H O E I S F PAC. Danny Cupchuk.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Danny Cupchuk, on behalf of the PAC, we stand on our written testimony in support. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. General Contractors Association of Poi.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. G C A provides comment on this measure. The purpose of this measure is to close a loophole where a firm is suspended for wage violations, but the officer should open a new firm to start bidding again. So the measure as introduced would do a more complete job of closing the loophole by suspending the principal army and subordinate armies. However, the current measure only suspends the principal army. So we think that the measure tries to close one loophole by creating another and therefore does not solve the problem. The subordinate armies will just create a new firm. So G C A believes that to truly address the issue as intended, then the measure should be amended to revert back to the way it was introduced. Thanks.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Members, question? Okay, we're going to move on to the next bill. Okay, House Bill 987 relating to labor data collection. First up is D B E T.
Aloha, Chair and Vice Chair, members of the committee. We stand on our written testimony in support. I'm available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Department of Labor, Industrial Relations.
Aloha, Chair. We stand on our testimony in support of the intent. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Next is Hawaii Restaurant Association. On Zoom. Not present. Okay, next is the Chamber of Commerce of Hawaii. Not here. Okay, is there anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Okay, seeing none. Members, questions? Okay, we're going to move on to the next bill, House Bill 1353 H D one relating to unemployment insurance. Department of Labor.
Good afternoon, Chair. We stand on our testimony in support. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, is there anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Nobody else signed up. Questions? Okay, we're going to move on to the next one measure. Okay, next bill is House Bill 257 H D one relating to the Department of Human Resource Development. Okay, DeHir.
Thank you, Chair. We'll stand on our written testimony in support of this measure. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Okay, seeing none. Questions, members? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to House Bill 564 H D one relating to the Department of Human Resource Development. DeHir.
We're in strong support of this measure as well and stand on our written testimony. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Like the deputy director, maybe? Anybody else wishing to testify? Okay, seeing none. Members, questions? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to the final bill, the House Bill 413 H D one. Relating to the Department of Human Resources Development. DeHir, thank you.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair. We'll stand on our written testimony in strong support of this measure as well. Thank you.
Okay, members, anybody else wishing to testify on this measure? Okay, members, questions? Okay, this is the fastest. Okay, members, we're going to recess for decision-making on this measure and, let's see, recess. Okay, we're going to reconvene the committee on finance for decision-making on our third agenda. First up is House Bill 1086 H D one relating to workforce development. Recommendation is to pass as is. Discussion, Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the chairs to pass H B 1086 H D one as is. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye. Representative Ayu.
Aye.
Representative Chan. Representative Cochran.
Aye.
Representative Garrett.
Aye.
Representative Kahaloa.
Aye.
Representative Keela.
Aye.
Representative Kobayashi.
Aye.
Representative Lamusau.
Aye.
Representative Morikawa.
Aye.
Representative Nishimoro.
Aye.
Representative Poi Poi.
Aye.
Representative Takinouchi.
Aye.
Representative Alcos.
Aye.
Representative Ward is excused. Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you. House Bill 302 H D one relating to workforce development as is discussion. Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the chairs to pass H B 302 H D one as is, noting the excused absence of Representative Ward, who will be noted excused for the rest of this agenda. Are there any reservations? Any knows? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. House Bill 1013 H D one as is. Any discussion? Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the chairs to pass H B 1013 H D one as is. Are there any reservations? Any knows? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, House Bill 1014 H D one as is. Discussion. Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the chairs to pass H B 1014 H D one as is. Are there any reservations? Any knows? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, House Bill 161 H D one as is. Discussion. Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the chairs to pass H B 161 H D one as is. Are there any reservations? Chair.
Representative Cochran.
Representative Cochran. Any additional reservations? Any knows? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, House Bill 1205 H D one as is. Discussion. Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the chairs to pass H B 1205 H D one as is. Are there any reservations? Any knows? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, House Bill 163 H D one as is. Discussion. Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the chairs to pass H B 163 H D one as is. Are there any reservations? Any knows? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, moving on, House Bill 334 H D one as is. Discussion. Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the chairs to pass H B 334 H D one as is. Are there any reservations? Any knows? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, House Bill 164 H D one as is. Discussion. Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the chairs to pass H B 164 H D one as is. Are there any reservations? Any knows? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you. House Bill 1409 H D two as is. Discussion. Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the chairs to pass H B 1409 H D two as is. Are there any reservations? Any knows? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you. House Bill 491 H D two as is. Discussion. Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the chairs to pass H B 491 H D two as is. Are there any reservations? Any knows? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, House Bill 57 H D one as is. Discussion. Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the chairs to pass H B 57 H D one as is. Are there any reservations? Any knows? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, House Bill 165 H D one as is. Discussion. Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the chairs to pass H B 165 H D one as is. Are there any reservations? Any knows? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. House Bill 168 H D two as is. Discussion. Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the chairs to pass H B 168 H D two as is. Are there any reservations? Any knows? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you, members. House Bill 987 H D one as is. Discussion. Vice Chair. Oh, Representative Kobayashi.
Parts of this bill is good, but this bill also asks for the. Parts of this bill is good, but this bill also asks for the impossible. It asks the employer, it requires the employer shall keep a record of the physical address of the employer, et cetera, et cetera, even if the employer uses a professional employee, employer organization, or third-party administrator. In other words, the employer never had the address because it hired this person through a third-party professional employment agency, and so how can they report anything? So, cleanup, please.
Yeah, thank you. We note that and we will deal with that with subject matter. Any further discussion? Okay, Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the Chair is to pass HB 987 HD1 as is. Are there any reservations? Any knows. Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, Members, House Bill 1353 HD1. Members, we're going to defer this one, we're going to deal with this, there is a GM from the governor dealing with this, and we're going to deal with this in the budget. Next is House Bill 257 HD1. Recommendation as is. Any discussion? Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the Chair is to pass HB 257 HD1 as is. Are there any reservations? Any knows. Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you very much. House Bill 564 HD1 as is. Discussion. Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the Chair is to pass HB 564 HD1 as is. Are there any reservations? Any knows. Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, House Bill 413 HD1 as is. Discussion. Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the Chair is to pass HB 413 HD1 as is. Are there any reservations? Any knows. Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you very much, Members. We are adjourned. Adjourned.